This will be our warning, 10-second warning. I think I've got my makeup on. Hopefully, I look okay.
Do you want this on, Mayor? Do you want this on? Or you want the Elmo on?
Welcome to the Student Citizen of the Month. I'm Mayor John Lewis. Helping for the next 30 minutes of this program will be Councilmember Jen Daniels, Councilmember Jordan Ray, Councilmember Jared Taylor, Councilmember Victor Peterson. Give them a nice big round of applause. As we are handing out the special awards, we'll be giving a Shop Gilbert bag. Okay, we've got a Shop Gilbert bag, and we'll have a plaque, and then inside of the bag will be some announcements. So I'll do those very quickly to give you some updates on things happening in Gilbert. Next slide, please. Saturday, the grand opening, AZ Ice Gilbert, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Free fun for the family. We invite you to come down and enjoy that, and the details will be in your packet. And if you did not get one, there should be some sheets at the doors as you exit the council chambers. The next slide talks about Memorial Day, a special celebration that occurs every year at the Gilbert Historical Museum. We invite you to come at 9:00 a.m., and there'll be a band playing. All of the veterans will be recognized in a short program, and then the museum will be open, free of charge until noon. Community is invited. Next slide. The month of June, we have a community-wide food drive, and we are engaging the help of everyone. There will be spots to put cans of food in various places of Gilbert, specifically any of the town buildings, fire stations, and so forth. Again, the flyer has some more information on that. Next slide. We are encouraging, because we've got some of the greatest students in Gilbert in the And many will be taking a summer break, and we know that's fun, lots of great things to do, and we encourage you, and this will also be a flyer that you will see, participating in our Maricopa County Reads or Gilbert Reads program that will take place from May 29th until July 26th. Part of the fun, for those of you who are competitive, will be tied to this program that those who succeed and do really well in the program will be in a similar program like this on September 11th. That is the four announcements. The next thing we do is we have three groups, and each group will probably be about seven to 10 minutes, and they'll come down, and we'll take a picture of each individual, and then we'll do a group picture. All of these pictures will be placed on our town website, and then if you would like to take a picture when you can anticipate a son or daughter, grandson, granddaughter will be having their picture right in this vicinity, feel free to come on down and have your picture taken. Before we begin with the three groups, this is the end of the school year. There's another group that we want to thank and give a nice big round of applause to. If there are any school administrators, any school teachers in the room, would you please And thank you, Jill Humphries, the school board members, too. We are so grateful for you. You are some of the greatest individuals in our community that are helping build a community, and education continues to be the number-one asset in our community, so thank you. And it's okay if you have a couple of days off, too, for the summer. And that leads to, for those who'll be recognized in the next few minutes, some of you know why, and some of you may not know why. We won't be giving all the details tonight, but you have been noticed and been given the recognition of Student Citizen of the Month for something you did, and maybe you did it all year long, maybe you did it just recently and somebody noticed, but whatever it is, thank you, because you have been the bright light in Gilbert and doing things that have caused someone to say that is really helpful in our classroom, on the playground, in our entire school. So whatever you're doing, keep doing it. You are recognized tonight as some of our greatest citizens, and we appreciate you. So Group One will now begin. If you are in elementary school, and the first initial of your school begins with an A to J, I'm going to invite you to come on down right now and stand right behind me in this vicinity. And that would be like Ashland Ranch up to the Islands Elementary and all of the schools in between. And Councilmember Daniels will be the spokesperson. She will say your name, and then you'll come up one at a time, and we'll have a chance to recognize you. So Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. From Ashland Ranch Elementary, Austin Gibson.
So Austin will be first, and Austin, I'm going to have you take that plaque and stand right there. Hold it up, and Austin gets to be in the picture with me. Yay for Austin, and then you can have this bag right here, Austin.
From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Waya Brown. From Coronado, oh, excuse me, from Finley Farms Elementary, Johnny Tadeo. From Gateway Point Elementary, Ellie Johnson. From Gilbert Elementary, Emma Hinton.
So Group One, we're going to do a picture together and invite all the council members to be in. Let's give Group One a big round of applause. Thank you. You may be seated. Group Two, if your elementary school begins with the first letter of K to Z, we invite you to come on down. What would we say as far as these cards that we're handing out in the back of the room, please?
These are Gilbert Digital cards. We put all of these photos on social media if you want to download them. We have these cards in the lobby, in the back of the room, and you can also get one from me and download the photos that I'm taking tonight.
Let's hear it for Gilbert Digital. Councilmember Daniels, please.
From Neely Traditional Academy, Aleah Grace Northrup. From Quartz Hill Elementary, Ryan King.
Multiple angles on this one.
Good. From Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Wyatt Sapola. Wyatt, did I say your name right?
Group Two, please come forward. We'll take a picture together. As they're gathering, of course, when we're done, if with the Shop Gilbert bags, there's ice cream or different treats you need to buy in the local vicinity, please do so. A big round of applause for Group Two. Thank you. If you are in junior high or high school, you are Group Three, please come on down. And we do realize tonight that many of our junior high and high school citizens are in band concerts and different things, but we still are grateful for those who are here. Councilmember Daniels, please.
From Desert Hills High School, Daniel Nava. This is a special one, Mayor. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Ed Lewis.
Accepting on behalf of Ed Lewis, who is playing the alto sax in his high school music concert right now, is his dad, if you could please take a picture on behalf of I'll make sure he gets this.
From Gilbert High School and, may I say, former youth mayor from last year for the town of Gilbert, Hunter Henderson.
Mayor Henderson.
From Gilbert Junior High, Yu-Yin Nguyen.
The pronunciation.
Wen, oh, God. I can't do it.
We got that first one down. All right, we'll take the picture.
Okay.
Are we cheering for the Red Sox or just a great student citizen of the month? Both, okay.
Big sports fan, our mayor is. And from South Valley Junior High, Nicole Harris.
I guess Cooley Junior High didn't come.
And that's our Group Three. And it's time for our group picture. A big round of applause for Group Three. Has Logan Carson made it yet?
Not yet.
Yeah, okay. Jen, let's go to one more slide. Jen, let's go to one more slide. Before we end and move into our regular council meeting, I want to take just one minute and tell you about an honorary student citizen of the month. And Logan will be here in a few minutes, he's currently coming from a school function at Playa Del Rey. Logan is one that, about a month ago, we had our annual student, our leadership, our youth leadership summit. And I talked about Logan, and we wanted to give him special recognition tonight in our formal council meeting. Logan attends Playa Del Rey, little over a year ago, with a serious infection, had a really challenging time in his life. Doctors said it would be 10% chance that he would live. And he did lose his right foot, his right eye, several of his fingers on his right hand, and yet he made it. Make-A-Wish Foundation gave Logan an opportunity to have a wish. And some of you who are familiar with the Make-A-Wish Foundation know that often it might be a Disneyland trip for the family, or somewhere special where you could have a great memory and enjoy it, and in many cases, then it might be whoever received that special time with family might pass away. In Logan's case, he was a fighter, and he made it. And when he was given the opportunity to decide what his make-a-wish would be, he chose to do something very special. He was thinking of his community, and he wanted to have a playground built in his neighborhood that could be used by all of the children, all the families in his area. And so in a few minutes, we're going to be recognizing Logan as he comes from his school event, and I just wanted to let you know that it was, from a Make-A-Wish perspective, as they described, probably one of the greatest projects they've ever done. And in the Student Leadership Summit, I made this comment, that someday when I grow up, I want to be a leader like Logan. And so if any of you are able to stay, he'll be here in a few minutes, he'll be recognized, but to all of our student citizens of the month, thank you, and we appreciate you, have a great summer, enjoy all the activities you can with your family, keep reading, and be ready for another great school year in just a couple of months. We are now officially dismissing and ending our student citizen of the month, and we'll be starting our regular formal council meeting in a few minutes, and you're invited to stay. Or as I said, you're invited to go out and buy ice cream and goodies, and then go home and tell your parents how much you love them, thank you. Thank you, welcome to our May 15, 2014 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. We have great excitement in the room, we have just concluded our student citizen of the month, and we will now begin this meeting with the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Peterson, if you could please introduce the person to lead us in the pledge, and we invite those in council chambers to please arise.
Mayor, we have Jamie Phillips here with us tonight, and she's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, that was awesome, please give her a big hand, thank you Jamie, you did a great job.
Thank you, may be seated. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk, an interested person should contact the clerk for further information. We are pleased tonight to have Pastor Randy Wolfe, from the Rock Church East Valley, here to offer the invocation, Pastor Wolfe.
Bow your heads with me as we count in order of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your continual goodness and grace on the town of Gilbert. We thank you for your heritage that has been here for years, for the founding fathers and the way that you formed this town, Lord. We ask for your continual guidance and grace to be upon the council members, the mayor, and for the town manager, and all the servants of this city. We ask, God, that wisdom and grace would continually guide the affairs, that you would continually show the future and begin to open up the plans. God, we know that you order the steps of a rightstanding person, and we ask that you continually do that to the grace of these wonderful men and women. We ask tonight that your guidance would be upon each of them, your grace would guide the affairs of these meetings, and that you would continue to establish this great town by your providence and your blessing. We ask you for these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you Pastor Wolfe. Our town clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook. Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Formerest present.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number two, Councilmember Taylor will present the proclamation. And we invite those who are here as part of the Adaptive Recreation Adult Unified Cheer Day to please come forward.
Thank you Mayor Lewis, we're excited to have this group here with us tonight, and I think you have a special presentation, maybe we'll start with that.
That's it?
That was fantastic, can you introduce your group to us and tell us a little bit about your group?
Hi, this is the special remix Town of Gilbert Wildcat Cheer Squad. They just got done with competing in their area and their state competitions, and I am so proud to say that they won gold in both of them.
We couldn't be happier to have you here tonight, and feel very lucky to honor you with this special proclamation on behalf of Mayor Lewis and the Town Council of Gilbert. with this special proclamation on behalf of Mayor Lewis and the Town Council of Gilbert. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Daniels, we will move to Agenda Item Three, that Special Recognition of Military Appreciation Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Our team, come on down. We have a shy team, so it's Just Roger tonight. Shouldn't say "Just Roger," important part of our committee. The month of May is Military Appreciation Month as designated by Congress in 1999, and here in the town of Gilbert, we have our Operation Welcome Home Committee, and we've done some neat things this whole week and been busy. And so Roger Pollard, an integral part of our committee, is going to tell us a little bit about the things that we've been up to.
Can you hear me now? My name is Roger Pollard. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for being here tonight. My name is Roger Pollard, and I am a proud member of the Gilbert Operation Welcome Home Committee. I want to take this time to say we appreciate the support you have shown to the Operation Welcome Home program. As a resident of the town of Gilbert and a Vietnam Vet, I can tell you that the town of Gilbert is honoring returning veterans and soldiers with respect and the dignity they deserve. Forty, forty-five years ago, many of us returned back from Vietnam, put our uniforms in a box, put the box in the closet, and closed the door. As far as appreciation for serving our country, the sadness was deafening. Those were different times with different mindsets, but that was a way, that was no way to treat a veteran. The town of Gilbert has corrected that mistake and is a template for other towns and cities, for other towns and cities who want to honor their hometown patriots. Our returning military are greeted with a handshake, told we appreciate their service, and then we say the magic words, "Welcome home." Their families are recognized for the sacrifices they have made, and they are given bouquets of flowers. If you've never been to an Operation Welcome Home ceremony, I encourage you to do it. It is a beautiful ceremony. You'll go great as an American and a citizen of the town of Gilbert. I'd like to recognize the Operation Welcome Home Committee. I am one of those, but there are others, who I'm proud of here, Ricklers, Amy and Lisa, who do all kinds of work. You should be proud of them as having been on this committee and doing what they do. Speaking of the Operation Welcome Home Committee, May is, as Jen said, Military Appreciation Month in Gilbert. The committee has created a curriculum for volunteers to use for fourth and fifth grade classes in Gilbert and in Higley. In that, the mission of the Operation Welcome Home is to pass on the traditions of patriotism and respect for our military. This initiative is shoulder-to-shoulder with that mission. Between May 12 and tomorrow, we will have visited fifty-seven, pardon me, fifty-six classes in nineteen different schools and addressed 1,896 kids. That's a lot of kids. Now, the curriculum for this program includes the purpose of the military, identifying the five branches of the military and their respective creeds, discussion of military awards and honors, and more specifically, the Medal of Honor, biographies of Medal of Honor winners, I should say recipients, I'm sorry, the importance of honoring the military and military members, the difference between Memorial Day and Veterans Day. There is a common confusion about that, but it's important that we know the difference. And finally, we describe a typical Operation Welcome Home ceremony that we have here in the town council. My wife, Betsy, and I have spoken to three separate fourth-grade classes, and we've enjoyed every minute of it. We have been warmly received by the teaching staff and have found the students eager to learn the material we provide. As far as a perspective from a Vietnam Vet, it's a great idea for students to see and hear from a veteran, if possible. I think when a student is told by a veteran that he served in a combat zone for the love of his country, to defend the Constitution and to protect his fellow warriors, it makes a positive and powerful impact on these kids. Overall, I think this type of initiative not only enhances the education of our young people, but it also inspires them to feel patriotic and to be proud to be a citizen of our wonderful country. Thank you to the town staff, the mayor, the council, business leaders, veterans, and residents that volunteered your time. We hope to make this a tradition and keep it growing next year and the year after. I thank you for your time, and thanks for the ability to talk about this wonderful program we have.
Roger and his wife, Betsy, have been an incredible asset to the program, and I have to tell you, kids have never been so disappointed when they asked me if I had ever served, as I was teaching some of these fourth graders, and I had to say no. They wanted to know where these guys were. And so next year, we're going to have to have more vets help us out. But we appreciate so much what they do, Small Business Lions, Lisa and Amy Riggler. Our committee is comprised of a large number of people now, and our initiatives continue to grow, so we continue to spread the word that we need to honor those members of the military and, almost as importantly, or as importantly, their families. So, thank you.
I think it would be fitting, and Roger, you stay here long enough for this. Would any of our veterans who are in the council chambers please stand? We'd like to recognize you at the right moment. I had the privilege to go into a fourth-grade class yesterday and to present the Military Appreciation Month message, and it was very touching, and they responded very well. So, thank you very much. Chief Dorn, could you please come forward? On a national basis, this is Police Week. It is also noted as National Enforcement Memorial Day, and I ask the chief to take just a moment, any feelings he wanted to express. We have great appreciation for our veterans, for our local public safety officials. There has been a tragedy that occurred. Chief Dorn is one of our regional leaders, and the tragedy that occurs in the neighboring community is also a tragedy for us. So, Chief Dorn, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor stated, May 15 is a day that's set aside by Congress and the President of the United States as Police Memorial Day. It's a day that, the week that Police Memorial Day falls in is called Police Week. And during that week, police officers, not only from the United States, but all over the world, gather in Washington, DC to recognize and remember the over 2,000 names of peace officers that appear on the wall of the Peace Officer Memorial in Washington, DC. Included in, and it's personal for me, included in those names are two of our own. Gilbert Police Officer Rob Targos, who was killed in the line of duty in 2006 when he was struck and killed by an impaired driver who left the scene of the accident. Also Lieutenant Eric Schuhhander, who was shot and killed on a traffic stop in 2010 at Valmiston Baseline. On a personal note, I have a member of my family on the wall. Lieutenant Robert Dorn, who is a member of the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, was killed in 1965 in a shooting at 91st and Glendale. He was my dad's only brother, my uncle, and that's a day I'll never forget as long as I live. And one of the days that helped set me on the path to where I headed, my dad was also a law enforcement officer in the federal government for over 40 years. So, it's personal. As we entered into Police Week this week, we suffered another tragedy here locally. Officer Brandon Mendoza was on his way home, Mesa Police Officer. When he was struck, his personal vehicle was struck by an unlicensed driver that just tonight on the news, they reported, had a blood alcohol level more than three times the legal limit when he struck and killed the officer. We'll bury him tomorrow. In fact, the procession will come along baseline from Higley Road to the cemetery at Harrison Baseline. That is treated as a line-of-duty death as he was on his way home from his ship. So, as we start tonight, the mayor has given me the honor to ask you to join me in a moment of silence as we remember Brandon. I had the opportunity to meet him, and I can tell you, not only was he a very good police officer, he was a great man. In fact, Mayor, he was at an event that you and I were at about a month ago. So, if you will join me in a moment of silence in recognition for Mesa Police Officer Brandon Mendoza, and also consider Officer Rob Targos and Lieutenant Eric Schuhhander of the Gilbert Police Department.
Thank you all, and thank you, Mayor.
With Officer Mendoza on our mind and great leadership there, we continue with some leadership recognitions. We'll have two that are about to graduate from high school, and then we'll move to Logan. So, Councilmember Daniels, the Mayor's Youth Award. Tell us about that.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been my privilege over the last several years to be able to work with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee and recognizing that we have some incredibly strong leaders amongst our youth. It was time for the Mayor's Youth Leadership Award, and we have two outstanding recipients of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Award. I think now might be a good time to bring them up, both Pradisha Towari and Albert Godleski. Come on up. We are incredibly proud of these two leaders. They have both participated in the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee for four years, really put their heart and soul into learning, understanding, becoming an integral part of the town. We so appreciate what you do. As a little background and explanation about the award, the Mayor's Youth Leadership Award is now an annual award given to an outstanding member of our Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. Recipients will have demonstrated through their multiple years of participation in the committee the six pillars of character: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Recipients will have held an integral role in MIAC and demonstrated their ability to lead their peers, as well as adults and town leadership. Their commitment to excellence and dedication to the community is exemplified in all aspects of their life. And not only are they leaders here in the town of Gilbert, they're going on, and they're going to become leaders in their respective universities that they're both attending. So, tell us quickly about your next steps.
I'm going in, majoring pre-med at UCLA next year with a minor in cultural studies.
I am heading off to the University of Alabama undeclared, but I'll figure it out.
We have no doubt you will, Albert. A nice round of applause for these two individuals. We have their plaque.
Introduce one more leader tonight, one of our great youth leaders, Logan. Logan has just come from a school activity at Playa del Rey, and we had Student Citizen of the Month from 6:30 to 7:00, and we made you an honorary Student Citizen of the Month. And at the end of the meeting, we told the group a little bit about Logan. A month ago, we had our annual Youth Leadership Summit. And in that setting, I don't even know if Logan knew this nor his parents, but I told the, and they were high-school-age leaders that came, and I told them a little bit about Logan, and I made this statement, and you'll understand in just a moment, that when I grow up, I want to be like Logan. And so, as a community leader, you'll get to know a little bit more about him with a couple of videos that we're going to show. Let's start with this first one from Channel 10. Well, that's still coming up. Logan is in the third grade. And you just came from a big celebration at Playa del Rey, tonight, a school function. Then yesterday, I was at your school, a 20-year celebration, an A-plus certification, and we called it "Three-Peach Cheer," didn't we? That was fun, wasn't it? Thanks for helping me out. Two seconds?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds for that advertisement to just pass its way through. Okay. We can do that. Logan, we appreciate you coming tonight, and I think you've got, is it your mom and dad and your brother, and then a special guest from Make-A-Wish? And your third-grade teacher. We have the best here. We'll have all of you come up in just a minute. Did that give you 30 seconds, Kurt?
Who is facing a life-threatening illness. Make-A-Wish granted a Valley boy who is facing a life-threatening illness his wish today. But this Gilbert boy, he's nine-years-old, he decided to pay it forward and give it, give to a community, his community. Jessica Flores is live now with more on the story for us. Jessica?
Amazing story. It's an amazing story, and it's actually the largest wish in Make-A-Wish Arizona's history. Sixteen different organizations had to come together to make it all happen. Logan Carson wished for a playground in his Gilbert neighborhood near McQueen and Guadalupe Road. His reasoning, pretty simple. He wanted something his friends and family could enjoy.
It's not every day that a nine-year-old boy gets to cut the ribbon to a playground, made for him, designed by him. But then again, Logan Carson's every-day is anything but typical.
I got strep, and it went through my body.
Logan lost his eye, right leg below the knee, and four fingers. But his life-threatening condition doesn't stop him from being a kid. When Make-A-Wish Arizona asked him what he wanted, he could have wished for most anything. But Logan imagined this, a playground for his community.
He was going to share with my friends.
You wanted something everybody could enjoy? Yeah. We do about 317 wishes a year, but we have very few wishes where it's a wish to give, and that's truly what this is.
Logan's parents say that's just how their son works. He wants those around him to be happy.
He enjoys watching kids do the things that he can't do, and we'll cheer.
And as everyone is climbing, dangling, spinning, every so often, Logan takes a break, looks on, then he just smiles.
How do you feel?
Happy.
Happy? What do you want to tell all your friends that are here right now?
You can play on it whenever you want.
A wish bigger than even this playground, happiness surrounding him, just like Logan imagined. Jessica Flores.
The park cost $40,000, and Make-A-Wish, actually, they got $60,000 in donation, making it so the foundation can grant every wish to the kids on their list this year. Reporting live, I'm Jessica Flores, Fox 10 News.
So, you can see why it's an honor for me to be standing next to a community leader like this. And as we know, we love the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and we've had several in Gilbert that before some of our great youth passed away, their families were blessed. And for Logan to have that wish and decide that he would do a community playground, touched my heart. And so, tonight, we honor him as one of our great citizens of the year. We're going to invite his family and our Make-A-Wish representative, our third-grade teacher, to come forward for a group picture. And Logan, you get to be front and center on this one, right over here. Thank you. A big round of applause for Logan. Logan hasn't seen this yet, but Gilbert Digital took some pictures of him, and there's a fire and rescue team that has just kind of fallen in love with Logan. So let's have that second video displayed so Logan can see how much the Gilbert Fire and Rescue Team appreciates him.
Logan Carson is a typical eight-year-old boy. He loves soccer and always has a smile on his face.
The kid's got a great attitude about this, what's happened to him, and he really went through a devastating process that very easily could have ended his life.
And the cause? A strep bacteria which claimed one eye, several fingers, and a portion of his right leg. Today, Logan tours Gilbert Fire Station 7 and meets Mace.
It's exactly like yours, Logan.
The only firefighter in the state of Arizona with a prosthetic leg.
I would say the main thing I would like Logan to take back is just that, you know, maybe if he's struggling one day, maybe if he's had a bad day, things are going through his head, that he can look back and say, oh, yeah, I remember firefighter Mace when I went to the station. He didn't have a leg. He seems to be doing good.
Bang, there it goes.
That's how.
Yeah.
Local station alert. Local station alert.
Once that light goes off, we have one minute. Now hold it down. Whoa, see? Now she's just holding buttons down in her hands. All right, hold on. Go ahead, boy. Light it up. That's my favorite. That's my favorite.
But he's got some hurdles that he still has to go through as he goes on his journey and his family as well. But there's really nothing holding this kid back. And I think hopefully in the future, as technology increases, as we talk with the prosthetics, there really shouldn't be anything limiting what he can do and what he wants to do with his life moving on in the future.
This is Gilbert Digital.
Logan, thank you. You do a great job on camera, and thanks for keeping an eye on that Fire Station 7 for us. We appreciate you. Thank you. We next move on the agenda to our communication from citizens. We have had two requests tonight, and as the agenda says, that individuals in the community may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter, comment upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Councilmember Taylor, we have two requests, and I'll invite you to state their names and these individuals if they could come forward, and from the podium, if they could state their name for the record and if they're Gilbert resident. And two minutes, because we have many others, we'll give you two minutes to speak. Please.
Mayor Lewis, we'll invite to the podium to start Mr. Brett Honig. And then after Mr. Honig, Mr. Nathan Shepherd can be on deck.
My name is...
Try that again. We have in the back, I think they flipped that. Brett, go ahead and try that handheld mic then, and you may have to turn it on.
Mayor, this is Brett Honig. I live at 508 East Page Avenue. I really appreciate Tim Thorne a long time. He's been my friend a long time in the police force, and I really love him and I care about him. I care about the town manager, and I care about the Gilbert Police. I really worry about the 18-year-olds at Denny's on Warner. They have been drunk in the Denny's. I just wondered how you guys will take care of them. I'm really worried if they get in a wreck or get killed. I just brought this up to your attention. I know Tim Thorne is very strict about this drinking in the law, and I really care about Tim and the police force, and I care about the 18-year-old kids that are drinking under law. A lot of people got killed in Tempe, and, you know, this is getting out of hand, and I was going to let town manager know this week about this, and I port in town manager every, and every, every day. And I just, you know, I really think something needs to be done with the 18-year-olds, stop drinking.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Mr. Nathan Shepherd?
Gotta lower this. Nathan Shepherd, I am in town of Gilbert. I'm also in the Gilbert Leadership Class, Class 22, current class. And I just want to say how, just how blown away I am of the city and the way it's run. Through the Gilbert Town, the Town of Gilbert Leadership Program, you get to see all the different aspects of the city. Quite a few of you have been through it, see a lot of people through it. And so I just want to thank you so much and appreciate and thankful to be a part of the town of Gilbert and looking forward to, for my kids to grow up and be a part of the leadership here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just confirming, any other requests tonight? Thank you. We move to the consent calendar. As noted on the agenda, consent calendar items are considered items that may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Councilmember Taylor, what feedback do we have from council members as far as which items they would like discussed?
Item 6, 17, and 20.
Thank you. And I understand Agenda Item 7 has been pulled, so I will entertain a motion on the other items.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Items 5, 8, 9, 10, 10A, 11, and 11A as revised and noted on the dais, 12 through 15, 18 and 19, 21 through 27, and 27A.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. Those items are approved with a 5-0 vote. I'm going to move to 17 and 20. If it does appear that they're going to be longer, we'll come back to 6. I've noticed with Councilmember Taylor that we have many who wish to speak on 6. And so on 17, who wished to have that pulled?
Councilmember Peterson.
Councilmember Peterson, please.
Mayor, I just have a brief comment. I am supportive of the item. I spent some time poring through the budget, looking at objective figures to kind of get a sense of the performance that we're seeing in our police department. And it does seem like we continue to raise the bar on our efficiency there. And with that, I'm supportive of it. I think we're moving in the right direction. I will just say that as a general request, for all significant investments and change in the way we do business, that we not only do an ROI, but demonstrably indicate where in the budget we will see savings, just for the future if we can. It's helpful. It's a little less time trying to dig around and figure it out. But with that, Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve Item 17.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. Agenda Item 17 is approved with a 5-0 vote. Agenda Item 20?
Mayor, I've asked to have this item pulled. So for the benefit of the public, this has to do with approving funds just over $200,000 for some human resource information system tools. And I won't restate some of the concerns that I mentioned in the study session, but I don't have a problem increasing the cost of the technology if it offsets other costs and the total operation is able to reduce costs and return that to the taxpayer. So to not repeat anything, I'm not prepared to, you know, support this tonight with, and be happy to work with staff to look at the operational impact, because if it can have a bottom-line impact, love to see that, to support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I'm in the same vein of thought on that. I'm very supportive of the kinds of things that we are looking to do through this software. I believe that those things will provide results. But until we're ready to commit to some objective measure of success on this project that's meaningful to the taxpayer, I'm not ready to support it. They're being asked to pay more not only for the initial investment, but also in ongoing costs. If we believe all these things will help us do, which is to increase our performance, we should be willing to put our money, or actually not our money, but the taxpayer's money where our mouth is. So Mayor, it's not a no, it's a not yet. I'd like to learn more and see if we can understand what efficiencies we'll gain through this software.
Thank you. For other council members, I will entertain a motion or comments?
Just a brief statement. I actually feel differently than the other two councilmembers that have spoken on this issue. We have derived certain strategic initiatives in the community, and we've all approved those strategic initiatives as making investments in our human capital. And I did, since Tuesday, have the presentation with our human resources and our IT department, and I feel very comfortable with this new piece of technology. And probably one of the most compelling things that I heard is that from an IT perspective, this is not the easiest option for them. But because of the capacity of this particular type of software and the ability that it has for us to both monitor and track performance goals and allows us to accomplish a lot of those strategic initiatives through the talent that we have here in the town, I feel very confident that we're finding, we've found the tool that's going to assist us best. Again, this isn't, this isn't an IT dream come true. This isn't just the picture of ease, if you will, but it certainly has the features and the resources that our human resources department needs in order to, again, build capacity amongst our employees. And I know that we will be able to quantify that, but until we build that capacity and are able to, you know, put this type of program to good use, I think we need to walk down this road and see what we can do with the right resources in the right hands. So I'm willing to make a motion, Mayor, in favor of this.
I will entertain that motion, please.
Mayor, can I make a comment real quick?
Please.
To add on to what Councilwoman Daniels said, I appreciate what Councilmember Peterson and Taylor have said, and it makes sense that when we spend money on something, we should be getting a return somewhere else. I think it's important to remember that we have town staff that has been stretched very thin for a very long time. And when we come in as a council and make these new initiatives and we ask for additional things, we're not just replacing current practices, we've also added additional requirements and requests to them. So this isn't simply replacing what we've done in the past, we're adding additional abilities with this as well. And so with that, I'm in favor of it and look forward to the benefits that we'll see from this.
Councilmember Peterson?
Just one last brief comment. The initiatives that we passed, conceptually are good, I think they are, but some of the objective measurables that I'm hoping to see through those initiatives, I have not seen yet. And so it's reinforced this idea to me that I've been taught as a best practice, whenever you do anything that's going to increase your efficiency, you find a way to back that money out of the budget. Otherwise, those gains evaporate. And so I'm just, I'm going to keep firm on that. I understand these other perspectives. But again, we're not, the high-level metrics that I'm looking at don't show it quite where we need to be, in my view. And so I think we need to get a little more careful with some of these expenditures.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Lewis, I move to approve Agenda Item 20.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. It's approved with a 3-2 vote. Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, I believe the one last item on the consent calendar was Item Number 6, and we have several that wish to speak on that item. And I will ask our Director of Parks and Recreation Department to give an overview of Item Number 6. And in preparation for many who wish to speak, Councilmember Taylor will be helping me direct traffic, and if you could maybe find a few, and there are boxes that have been checked in favor, those who are against, and maybe a few in favor, a few against, and we'll go through. For those who wish to speak, we want to make sure all of you get a chance. Because there are so many, and looking at the time that's been allocated for this, we'll give you two minutes apiece. If that's not enough time and you came with someone else, and you might want to give your two minutes to someone else so they can have more time, that would be fine too. But please.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Members of the council, Rod Buchanan, your Parks and Recreation Director. A couple of housekeeping items on the dais. You'll find a copy of the 2014 Community Fishing Program for your reference. I'd like to point to a couple of pages that have the new areas that I'll be talking about here in a second on pages... 38 and 39. Additionally, since the council communication came out, you'll find another email communication from Mr. Mike Evans. Also, in the last couple of days, I've had some questions about documented bird deaths, and so you'll find that also in the packet, along with a couple pictures of a recent bird that was entangled. And then lastly, you'll see a map of the proposed locations. So that's on your dais before I start.
Thank you. And Rod, could you, for the public and those here in council chambers, give a brief overview of what Agenda Item Number 6 is all about?
Yes, thank you. Agenda Item Number 6 is a proposal from Gilbert Town Staff Parks and Recreation Department to ask basically the Fish and Game Department with the state to be able to change some of the fishing regulations and the program in Gilbert, Arizona. And so the basic overview is that in 1999, Gilbert built the preserve at Water Ranch, and at the time, the population was below 59,000. And since that time, the population has grown to over 220,000 people, and the only organized fishing in Gilbert that the town organizes is still at that location. If you were to ask the Parks and Recreation Department to design a new program today, you would see what you're seeing now before you. Currently, a pilot program is, has been run at Discovery, McQueen Parks by the Fish and Game, and that's at no charge to the town of Gilbert as a pilot, and they have had noted successes at that location. And the proposed distribution to McQueen Park and to the west and Discovery to the south, and Freestone to the north, will take advantage of existing resources that are currently in place. In other words, we don't have to do much in order to activate those lakes that are sitting there and ready for fish. So one of the interests that we're trying to solve is the distribution of the program to more locations in Gilbert, including the south side of Gilbert, which has been noted... successes at that location. And the proposed distribution to McQueen Park and to the west and Discovery to the south, and Freestone to the north, will take advantage of existing resources that are currently in place. In other words, we don't have to do much in order to activate those lakes that are sitting there and ready for fish. So one of the interests that we're trying to solve is the distribution of the program to more locations in Gilbert, including the south side of Gilbert, which has been noted in the master plan to want more amenities. The master plan also talks a little bit about birding and how important it is to Gilbert, along with the economic development aspect of it as well. There's another issue at the riparian, and so it was designed to attract birds. And I suspect that no one thought that the popularity of the site to migratory birds would occur, especially rare and protected species. Since 1999, the site has transformed into what I'll call an incredible birding area. And so in fact, we've had nine, 298 different bird species documented at the riparian as listed on the Cornell Laboratory of Orthognology, and the riparian is also listed as an important birding area, according to the National Audubon Society and others. What that means is that this is a regional attraction for birds watching at our own riparian. Unfortunately, there's been numerous deaths of wildlife due directly to the fishing program that is present there today and at the riparian. No one most likely anticipated the impact of fishing would have on the wildlife. And the proposed changes that you see before you, if approved by the commission, that's the Department of Fish and Game Commission, will significantly decrease the danger to the wildlife at the riparian. Now, I want to talk just briefly, Mayor and council, about the fact that also the Parks and Recreation Master Plan showed urban fishing as the number one recreational activity that was participated in by Gilbert residents. That's the one that we did in the master plan. The proposed changes would allow for year-round fishing experience as well, especially when kids are out of school, and where currently is only about six to eight months a year, depending on the location. Some other things we've talked to Department of Fish and Game about in order to meet some interest are a rod loner program. So nobody will be able to, no kid or adult will have to pay for a rod to go fishing, will be able to have a loner program so they can do that, along with the lures and flies. We would like to hold educational opportunities, classes, and events all related to fishing. And then there was another issue that came up regarding the licensing fees, and there would be known increase in licensing fees. As far as outreach, we published two public meetings with Fish and Game and had several informal meetings with riparian users and fishermen. Also, you'll note that in the 2014 book, all three locations are listed in the book. And so as far as knowing about different locations, there has been an effort to try to get the word out on the different locations in our town. So in closing, for the brief overview, there's been no additional cost to the town with this program. So in other words, this particular proposal will distribute it throughout the town. So it takes the urban fishing program, it's now called the Community Fishing Program, which is basically catch and keep to three other locations in town. It changes the riparian to year-round fishery, and it allows for, at no extra cost to the town. There's also been some discussion about enforcement. So currently today, we have three park rangers, and they go out and they do ask for licenses periodically. They do check for bag limits, and they do check to make sure that they're not using more than two rods without a two-rod stamp. And if they are using two rods, it's a two-rod stamp. The Parks Recreation and Library Services Board has approved this proposal unanimously. They would like to also meet some interests that are in the master plan. The proposal was done in collaboration with the Arizona Game and Fish Department. Based on the outreach results, they intend to do a roving creel study in 2015. What that means is they're going to go out and talk to people using the lakes and participating in this program to see if there's any changes to be made next year. And we intend to reevaluate this next year as well to see if some improvements can be made. And council's approval tonight means that the IGA, as is proposed, moves forward to the Arizona Game and Fish Department Commission, and they will consider it in September. The Arizona Game and Fish will also, their staff members will also do more outreach to get more information for this proposal after this evening. And with that, I think I'd like to turn it back to the mayor and council for the public comment period, and then I'll be more than happy to answer any questions after that.
Thank you. Before we have public comments, any council member questions or comments at this time? Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, please.
Mayor Lewis, we do have a number of comments and requests to speak on this, but before I invite individuals up, I do need to clarify a couple here. One is Mr. Carl Snyder. I have a request to speak, but I don't have the box checked whether you'd like to speak or not. Is Mr. Snyder here? You want to give me a, you would like to speak? Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Mike Stewart, just check the box, communications from the citizens, but we'll just pull you in to this particular comment period. I'm sorry. Just for the record, Mayor, he does not wish to speak, but has submitted a request to speak. There wasn't a for or against on that, but. We can come back to that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, we can, why don't we start with a couple of individuals, Mr. Ed Oldrick and Mr. Gentry Smith?
Thank you. We'll try and give notices to the next after that. And as mentioned, for the record, we're asked to have you state your name if you're a Gilbert resident, and then you'll be given two minutes to speak. Please.
My name is Ed, whoops. My name is Ed Ondrick, and I live in Tempe. And basically, thank you for even permitting this to come forward. I myself am a grandfather and a member of Desert Flycasters, a group that supports flyfishing of various types and things of that sort. Actually, if you're a fisherman, you've got to travel some distance to get really good fish here. There are a number of lakes that are close by where people are able to use bait fish and things of this sort. If you travel to those lakes, you'll see that the fish, there are quite a few fish sometimes in the water. And because it's bait fishing, why, it kills the fish very easily. To use flies is a completely different situation. You're using barbless hooks, the fish live a longer life, and they become larger and larger, and they're certainly a lot more fun than traveling 30 or 40 miles away to something where you can catch better fish. So the items that are here, of course, we are asking that you would approve this and let this go forward. I think it'll have a great impact on the local community. My own grandchildren live only about 10 or 20 blocks from here, and I would like to take them fishing where you can really catch something, instead of continuing to go to some of the other neighboring lakes where it's relatively small. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Mayor, next is Mr. Gentry Smith, and then we'll hear from Mr. Carl Snyder and Isaac Carter.
Hi, my name is.
It may have been turned off, and you can just keep it on.
Is that good? Can you hear me? No.
You can just use the handheld. I mean, the.
There it goes. My name is Gentry Smith. I am a Chandler resident just down the road on Warner. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to voice my support for the proposed changes at the Gilbert Community Fishing Program. I applaud Gilbert Parks and Recreation Department for their progressive thinking and for drafting a well-balanced plan that increases and diversifies angling options in the town of Gilbert. As a supporter of responsible angling efforts such as catch and release and the use of single barbless hooks, I enjoy fishing even more knowing I'm minimizing the impact on the fish and other wildlife. In addition to being an avid angler, I am a board of directors member for both the Desert Flycasters Fly Fishing Club here in the Southeast Valley and the White Mountain Lakes Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the conservation, restoration, and protection effort of Arizona's lakes and streams. I am also a regular contributor to the Southwest Fly Fishing Magazine, the leading destination-specific angling publication covering the southwest. That includes Southern California, Nevada, Utah, Colorado, Arizona, New Mexico, Oklahoma, Texas, Mexico, and Central America. As the education chairman for Desert Flycasters, I think I speak for the entire club when I say I would greatly welcome a reliable managed fishery to introduce new angling students to the joys of fishing. As an associate board member of the White Mountain Lakes Foundation, we are committed to helping raise funds and offer support to initiatives such as this. As a contributing, as a contributor to Southwest Fly Fishing Magazine, I can promote Gilbert's new regulations and fishing opportunities to a local and out-of-state audience. In addition to the angling aspects, there's the economic aspects. I use an example, in the town of Springerville, both the White Mountain Lakes Foundation and Desert Flycasters worked with Arizona Game and Fish to institute similar regulations on Becker Lake. And then in January, I ran a, I did an article in Southwest Fly Fishing. My, a time. Am I out? Okay.
You've got at least 10 more seconds to wrap up.
Okay. We ran an article in Southwest Fly Fishing Magazine, and in talking to the businesses in the community, the impact has been positive. You know, they say the parking lot's always full, and they're appreciating the fact that they've got an out-of-state, out-of-community audience coming in, spending revenue in their town.
Thank you.
My name is Carl Snyder. I live here in Gilbert. I often fish at Water Ranch, as does my father, and I used to take my five boys down there. Anybody who fishes, try to take five boys, lure fishing, little boys. Can you imagine what that would be like? That's why you take them there bait fishing. And there's a lot of seniors that fish down here, and that's why, that's why I'm here tonight. I'm really upset about that. You were talking about veterans before. I can see four of them sitting back there that are vets from Korea and World War II that fish down there and enjoy fishing. This argument that the fishing lines and the hooks are snagging birds is specious. I fished in the Muskegon River once in a no-kill area, and I pulled a loon out that had a barbless hook and a bunch of fishing line. Lure fishing line doesn't magically not ensnare birds, so that was a specious argument. And to say they found two animals, mammals and birds, a month dead in that area is also specious, because you probably would find eight or 10 that died of natural causes. I just want to say some of those arguments that I've heard in favor of this change are ridiculous. This has happened twice before in 10 years. And the idea, I read it in the paper, they're going to move it over to Freestone Park. I live next to Freestone Park. That park, that water is dark green and dark blue. You're not going to take a fish out of it, eat it, and everybody knows that, including everyone in the Parks and Recreation Commission. So I feel like you're chasing all these families and these seniors out for this elitist private fishing preserve. Anyway, sorry, I'll get a little upset about it. I didn't plan to speak tonight. I think I said my piece. You know, I can drive somewhere to go fishing. I'm only 60 years old, well, next year. These guys are 80 and 75. They can't drive far away. They've been fishing there a long time. They can't take fish out of Freestone Park. Why can't they have flyfishing there? If you're just going to release them, you can't eat a fish out of Freestone Park anyway. That's my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Isaac Carter. After Mr. Carter, we'll hear from Mr. Mike Evans and Mr. Thomas Rousseau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing me to come here today. I can tell you that most of last year, I fished Water Ranch almost every single day except for the weekends. I fished Monday through Friday, and most of the guys that I fish with basically are out there almost on a daily basis as well. One of the things that we do is, and one of the things that I enjoy the most is, is teaching children and anyone who doesn't know about fishing, and I personally have probably given up probably about $60 or $70 worth of my own tackle to teach other people how to fish Water Ranch correctly. Okay? We, in the amount of time that I've spent there last year, and I'm not a resident anymore, I just bought a house in Sandton Valley, so I haven't fished Water Ranch now for a couple of months. In the amount of time that I fished there last year, I saw two ducks that were dead. I don't know why they died, but they were coots. I don't think that they were on the endangered species list in any way, shape, or form. I don't know what killed them. Okay? I, you know, no, I'm the type of person that is totally catch and release unless I want to eat it. The founding fathers who built this park and here in Gilbert, built it with the intention of the residents and the people in the community to be able to come in, catch fish, teach their children, and be able to take home whatever they caught. Okay? Within limits, you know, according to the state. And I think it's preposterous, okay, that you cannot fish Water Ranch Park with a fly rod. I also fish with a fly rod, okay, unless you plan on snaring everybody walking down the sidewalk. Okay? The only other way to do that is for a person to actually be in the water, okay, to not hit somebody with a fly line. Okay? So this, you know, turning it into a flyfishing place, you're going to get rid of all the foot traffic that walk around that park. Okay? They just can't do it. Again, thank you very much for your time, and I hope that, you know, with the wisdom that the forefathers that built this park and built this place to fish, okay, that your wisdom will prevail in why they originated it to begin with. Okay? And that was for the people to be able to go there, catch fish, and be able to take a few home and eat them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Evans? After Mr. Evans, Thomas Rousseau.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm Mike Evans. I am a Gilbert resident. I am one of the forefathers that worked on building this park and lake. I fished it with my kids many times. I am speaking tonight as the conservation chairman of the Desert Rivers Audubon Society. We represent about 250 dues-paying members in the Southeast Valley, Gilbert, Mesa, and Chandler. Our main place where we meet is here in the library, right next to the park. We have about 900 people on our mailing list. This is a decision that is what is best for the wildlife that is out there. The opportunity that we have as a community for economic development is much greater with people coming to watch birds than it is people coming to catch fish that are dumped into that lake by the Arizona Game and Fish Department. We have about 250,000 people a year that come to the Riparian Preserve at Gilbert Water Ranch to see the birds. There's nowhere near that kind of a crowd coming to fish that lake. So this is a decision that is best for the wildlife, and we strongly support this decision. And we encourage you to please make the decision that is best for the wildlife that we built the facility to attract. Thank you very much. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Rousseau? After Mr. Rousseau, we'll invite Mr. Kyle Graff and Mr. Pacer Udall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Tom Rousseau. I live at 667 East Pony Lane in Gilbert. I think there's probably no one in this room that doesn't enjoy taking a small child to a lake and catching a fish. And it's all wonderful, and the only issue I have with catching those small little bluegills or small little sunfish is they want to take them home to show mom, dad, the other parent or grandparent that isn't there. That's part of this issue. I belong to Desert Flycasters. I am a fly fisherman. I have fly fished at Ranch Park. Not that I've caught any fish, but I have fly fished there. It is quite an issue the way it is right now, but I believe this proposal has a stipulation that will allow float tubes, which will allow the individual to get into the lake and fish, and to avoid any harm to any people on the sidewalks. But I believe moreover, than whether to catch or release, or we're going to catch the fish to take home, I think this is part of an educational program that our children need to know today. This is part, they have to be forces of our environment. They can't just take fish out and arbitrarily take, and I would venture to say, all these small fish never make it to a frying pan. They're probably lucky if they make it to the flower bed. I think they get thrown in the dumpster. What we're trying to achieve here tonight is allow these fish to grow and create a sport for our children and for them to realize that they are forces of our environment. That's basically what I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think she gets two minutes, too. My name's Kyle Graff. I'm a resident of Gilbert, and I'm here tonight, here tonight as an avid fly fisherman. I own over a dozen fly rods. I actually don't even own a bait fishing rod anymore. But I'm also here to, because I am against the proposal tonight, and the reason is because I do have small children. I don't think it's fair for very small children to be expected to learn how to fly fish or learn how to lure fish at that age. I think that the, the park was built for them to be able to come and catch a fish in a way that they're able to do it. Also, Water Ranch is the closest pond to where I live, down on Greenfield in Warner, and it allows for me to go there in the evenings with my children without having to travel very far. And like was mentioned before, the other waters that are mentioned that would be used for, you know, bait fishing are dyed blue, and they're not natural-looking, and if we did want to keep any fish there, then we'd feel a little bit scared to do so. So that's my input. Thanks.
Thank you.
After Mr. Udall, we'll invite Mr. Mike Stewart and then Mr. Richard Brooks.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm a resident of Gilbert, and I've expressed my views in other ways, but I'll take a short moment here. To me, the issues, the Riparian Preserve needs to be enjoyed by all. We need, there needs to be a way, and maybe a compromise to work this through, but families need to be, their interests need to be looked at as well. And I also think that enforcement issue, I just went there this morning after dropping my daughter off to school at GCA, went by and just took some pictures. I mean, there's trash everywhere in the lake, right by the sign that says, "No littering", you know, stuff like this. I know there's park rangers, and we're stretched thin. Maybe there's a way, you know, to deal with this issue and, and look at things more from an enforcement standpoint and the laws that already exist. So I would just, again, just, why not let the, revise the IGA, let it go forward, expand to the other waters anyway? We should just do that anyway, and let the status quo continue with an emphasis on enforcement at Water Ranch.
Thank you.
After Mr. Stewart, Richard Brooks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Stewart. I'm a resident of Phoenix, Arizona. I wasn't going to speak, and I heard so many fascinating side issues to this, I thought it was pretty much cut and dry, but it's not. There's a lot to this. I'm a member of the National Audubon Society. I'm a very avid birder. I didn't realize there was problems there. I'm not aware of all the issues. I was specifically here just to support having fishing game create, create some area in Gilbert. I'm not a resident, I don't know which one, but a catch and release. And after you have a catch and release lake for a couple of years, you're going to find out just what Springerville found out, that there are some big fish there that are a lot of fun to catch. And again, I can't address the specific issues. I can only give you a general overview of what it would mean for the city and for the people around the area. I'm very pleased that Game and Fish has increased their urban fishing program, now the community fishing program, to include so many other lakes, including one near my house, where they're going to stock it, where they're going to manage it. As far as the litter goes, you could probably get some volunteers from clubs. I belong to Trout Unlimited, to the White Mountain Lakes Foundation. I'm a board member on the Arizona Flycasters Club, and I'm also a member of the Desert Flycasters Club. We do a lot of volunteer work. About all you would have to do is ask. I hope you can come to a reasonable solution that pleases as many people as possible. And as to one thing about the elderly veterans, I've got nothing against veterans or old people, but I bet that with over 220,000 people in your city, there are some other old people that don't live near a lake that would like to do some fishing, too. Okay? So that's all I've got to say about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, while Mr. Brooks comes forward, after Mr. Brooks, we'd invite Dennis Riordan and Alfred Schneider to come forward to address the dais after Mr. Brooks.
Evening. I'm Richard Brooks. I'm a Tempe resident. I'm a senior, and I'm a veteran also, and I'm a supporter of catch and release fishing. I've got four grandchildren that are now 18, 14, eight, and six. I've taught them all to fish, and I've taught them all to fish with artificial, single-barbless hooks and catch and release. I started fishing when I was just about old enough to walk, and I fished like we all did back then with bait and hooks, and we kept everything we could get a hold of. But the times have changed, you know? We recycle water, we recycle other products, and there's no reason we can't recycle fish, too. You want fish, there's a lot of places to get them. But fishing, to me, is a sport, not a way to support my family's meat intake. As a catch and release fly fisherman, we also practice some pretty stringent, if you will, environmental practices. We have the club that I'm a member of. We pass out plastic bags and plastic, and rubber gloves or disposable gloves. So every time we go someplace, we pick up trash. We offer an incentive by, every time you turn in a bag of trash to the club, you get a raffle ticket, and you get a chance to win some kind of gear, okay? And, you know, we don't, our ways of fishing, we don't leave trash around because some of it's expensive, you know? You can catch a fish with a spinning rod and a casting bubble on an artificial fly, either on the surface or below, with single-barbless hook, and you don't need bait, and you can let them go, and you can teach a four-year-old to do it, because I've done it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Is this on? Hello? Dennis Riordan, resident of Gilbert, and I, I'm against making the change on this. Number one, I think one of the issues is in regard to the duckstine, and there's various causes on that, but I think one of them is lack of enforcement out there in regard to people feeding the ducks with bread. That draws the ducks, therefore fishing line and hooks are going to be more prevalent. And again, with trouble hooks out there, that's something that can be changed and maybe solve the situation somewhat. The other part is the fly casting. There's a lot of people walking around the lake constantly, and with Flycasters, that line does have a tendency to get caught in trees, and then you run into the same problem with the ducks. So I'm for keeping it the same way and against catch and release. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, while Mr. Schneider comes forward next, we'll, after Mr. Schneider, Ms. Lisa Limbert and Ms. Helen Corson are invited to speak.
Okay. I'm Alice Schneider. I've been a Gilbert resident for almost 30 years. I live right next to Freestone Park, and I'll tell you, Freestone Park has the same wild creatures as does the reserve. Many of them commute between the two. If you move bait fishing there, and bait fishing is supposed to be such a terrible thing, you're going to endanger those animals, too. So if you want to be fair about it, close down Water Ranch Lake completely and close down Freestone. That's the way, if you're going to protect the birds and the turtles, that's the way you do it, not by changing the type of fishing. Right now, we have fly fishermen and lure fishermen fishing there. We have people with barbless hooks. We have people catching and releasing. We have all kinds there, and now you want to make it just for one kind, a private reserve for elitists? It doesn't make any sense. And that's all I had to say about it.
Thank you.
Ms. Limbert.
Hi, I'm Lisa Limbert. I am a resident of Gilbert, and I am here to support East Valley Wildlife's position. We are in favor of this change. When an animal is injured by a barbed hook, it is very different than a barbless hook. And I am a licensed wildlife rehabilitator in Gilbert, and often these animals, this wildlife we've mentioned, gets brought to me, and I'm the one that has to take these barbed hooks out of this wildlife. Their flesh is shredded. We get turtles, birds, there are mammals there, and I really think that we need to consider the type of injuries that are happening to these animals. I wouldn't presume to suggest that we aren't still going to have animals with hooks in them if it is switched to a catch and release, but I do think that limiting barbed hooks in that beautiful preserve that, by the way, is a national certified wildlife habitat, is an important thing to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Corson, while she comes forward, we have a request to speak for Mr. Scott Anderson, but not, did you want to speak, Scott? Okay, you'll be up next, Ms. Corson. Please.
Hello, my name is Helen Corson. I live in Scottsdale. I'm a member of Desert Flycasters, and I'm here to present to you a statement in support of the program, and it is signed by 64 members of the Desert Flycasters. We all believe in catch and release. There are many different ways of fishing, but the most efficient way to do catch and release is with a barb, barbless hook. And we all fish, we love fishing, we'd love to be able to fish in your park, and there's 64 people who say likewise.
Thank you. And we'll have you give that list to our town attorney, please.
Mayor Lewis, after Mr. Anderson. Come on up, Scott. We have one last comment from Mr. David Farris.
Thank you, your honor, and council members. Just a brief moment to give you some historical perspective on what was hap-
And noted, and welcome back, so Gilbert resident, Scott Anderson, continue.
I'm sorry, 808 East Princeton.
That part we didn't even-
Let me give you just some brief historical perspective, having seen the preserve over the last 13 years. When we created the Recreation Lake, it was intended to become an integral part of the overall habitat. We wanted the, the lake to be designed in a manner such that it would be self-sustaining. There's structure that was put in the bottom of that lake for the purpose of creating viable habitat for the fish. And over the years, we've tried to build up a population of fish in that lake. However, it's acted mainly like an aquarium, more than like a viable habitat for fish. What's happened is each stocking that is done by Game and Fish ends up being fished out in that lake within 10 days. And it's not because people, the people that are here tonight are responsible fishermen, but we have many that showed up at the preserve even late at night that were not quite as responsible, and were filling buckets with fish and taking them out of the lake. What happens is the fish then don't have the opportunity to get established. The lake was actually designed, there's areas next to the bridge where we've got it marked as no fishing, other areas that are adjacent to the shoreline where it is viable for spawning for the fish, and we've had fishermen even in those areas fishing for the fish that happened to be there trying to spawn. So you can see that over the years, and this is something that's occurred frequently and over and over and over, and as such, we're actually dealing with what you could term as a dead lake. It's, it's a lake where you just dump fish in, take them back out, and then bring them back, dump them back in again. What we want to see happen back when we designed it was to have a viable habitat where fish could get established, and as someone had mentioned earlier, you, you get sizable fish, good game fish in there when you, you approach it in that manner. As was mentioned, we've, we've come, over the years, we've come before you a couple of times to change that, and both times we backed off because it was the only community fishing program in the, in the community. Now we have an opportunity for other lakes, and I don't see a reason why this lake could not now become viable as habitat being used responsibly.
Thank you.
My name is David Farris. I live in Chandler. At one time, I was an employee of this town. I'm a member of the Desert Flycasters. I'm not here to speak for them, but I am here to speak very much in favor of this proposal. I had like 14 different things I wanted to say tonight, but most of it's all been covered. I'd like to address two of them that have been raised, one of which is, is the fact that we're talking about a body of water that's in a preserve, and yet we're doing put-and-take fishing, which is so contrary to the whole philosophy of that entire layout that it's just, it's amazing, the glaring inconsistency there, that there's no reason why we can't preserve the fish the same time that we preserve the birds. It is nice to be on the same side as Mike Evans. We aren't on the same side very often, and it's kind of a pleasure to be there. The one thing that's been raised several times has to do with the quality of water at these other places. I don't know whether the council knows it or not, but the pond at Town Hall right here is, has been designated by Game and Fish as a catch and release lake. That was done basically as a result of our efforts with Gilbert Fly Fishing Programs. We happened to be going up to Flag when it was on, they were meeting at the council, their commission, and we asked the council for permission to go up there and ask for have the pond, and nobody really cared about the pond, so they said, "Yeah, sure, go ahead." So we went up, and sure enough, they did it. And Game and Fish did something very nice for us. They've stocked the pond, and there is now a very self-sustaining breeding population of very large bluegill in that pond, and there are also some really nice trout in there as well. The water doesn't look really good when you look at it, but there's lots of bugs, and as a result of being lots of bugs, the fish survive. You see little bluegill in there. They have not been stocked. Those are bluegill that were hatched there, that were spawned in that, in that pond. Before, Game and Fish will put water, or put fish in any body of water, they stock it. They go out and test it, and they don't test it just once a year. Whenever they have stocked our pond, they've been there two weeks ahead of time, and one of their chemists is down there doing all kinds of samples with it. And so if they're going to put trout, or bass, or bluegill, or catfish in any of our lakes, on the other two lakes, they're going to make sure the water works for it. And Game and Fish supports this. They obviously have tested the water, and the water's going to be okay. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, we're there, and I'll check council chambers, any other requests to speak on agenda item six. Okay? And did you fill out a card?
Yeah, I actually already spoke. Do you have fly fishermen, out of all fishermen in the world, what's the percentage of people who fish fly fishing versus every other kind of fishing? They are a tiny, tiny minority, okay? There's so few people, it's not that fly fishers are that many of them. They're just talking about how to help.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. I'll take that as, did we, I didn't see any others. And did you wish to speak? Okay, and what we need to have you do is to fill out a card and bring it forward, and while that happens, we'll welcome Vice Mayor Cock. Good to have you here. And I think you picked up on the fact that we've completed the consent calendar, and we're on agenda item number six. While the card is still being filled out, any questions or comments at this point from the council? And Rod will be our one to be responding to them. Councilmember Daniels?
I really wanted to make a joke, like, I feel like a fish out of water in this conversation or something like that, but probably not totally appropriate at this point.
Please come, come forward, please, and we'll get this card.
Mayor Lewis, I do have one question for Rod, and Rod, you can answer this after she speaks, but I thought it might be important for us to maybe talk about options. I feel like maybe we- I feel like maybe we, there isn't just one answer right now, and maybe we need to discuss options, so.
I just really have one comment to make.
And what we'll have you do, we now see the card, and for the record, if you can state your name, and if you're a Gilbert resident, then you'll be given two minutes.
This Doris Rirn, I am a Gilbert resident, and I just want to really say one thing. They keep saying about all these really big fish that they're going to have, and the fact of the matter is, at that lake in the summer, the trout are going to die. They are not going to get really big. And actually, the fishermen taking the fish out and eating them are actually better for the trout, because the lake is so shallow that with the heat in the summer, the fish are not going to sustain, they're not going to be able to live anyhow. They live great up north because it's cool, but they're not going to live down here. So the fishermen taking the fish out is actually a service to the town. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Okay. Councilmember Daniels, continue.
Thanks, Mayor. So Rod, you and I spoke earlier today, I'm sure others have as well. We did get a lot of emails with concerns about the changes, and also some emails also in support of the changes. It was pretty interesting that most of the public comment was split, and that doesn't always happen. So that was nice to hear, lots and lots of perspectives. But is there really only one option at this point, to either go total catch and release, or one person suggested no fishing? What type of options do we have to both accommodate the needs of the rest of the wildlife that occupies Water Ranch, and then also the various kinds of fishing that others want to do there?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Councilmember Daniels. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for their passion tonight, whether you're on one side or the other. It's good to hear your comments, so I thank you very much for that. And some of these folks have been involved since day one, which is really good, and so they're still very interested in this topic. First of all, the rod loaner program, which is the rod, I'm going to talk a little bit about, if you don't mind, just a couple key points before I tell you the option. Is that all right? Okay. The rod that we'll be loaning out will not be a fly rod. It's very easy and productive to be able to fish with a fly under a bobber in a lake like, such as a riparian, which, on a single barbless hook. I've done it myself with my own grandchildren, very successfully. So we won't be loaning out fly rods. So this is not about fly fishing versus regular fishing. You'll still be able to regular fish at the riparian. The folks that want to take fish home, they'll still have that opportunity. There was a mention about the dye, and I did check with our water expert that takes care of our lakes. It's an independent contractor, and it's food coloring. And it's actually much safer than algicide, which we actually just put into Water Ranch because we did have a little bit of a bloom. So it actually is very safe, it's consumable, and it's biodegradable. So we've been told by them that it is safe. Department of Fish and Game has already tested Freestone, which is a couple miles away from Water Ranch. And so the people that live in the north side will still have something very close to them. However, I do have what I think might be a potential solution. And that is, what three interests are, again, one is protect the wildlife. So if we can suggest to the Fish and Game Department that we would like to see barbless, single hooks, artificial fly or lure, I think that that would meet the wildlife issue. Secondly, if we were to have the program still at Discovery, still at Freestone, and still at McQueen, at least for the first year, that would also solve getting it distributed throughout town. Now, as far as the year-round fishery, if we were to go ahead, and I think we could cover it in our operational budget for next year, it would cost about $1,000 more. I checked with Fish and Game a little earlier today. If we were to do catch and keep at Water Ranch on the same stocking cycle, and we would have to add a few stockings, we could do catch and keep trout and catfish with, using the same type of hook system, so it's still safe for the wildlife, but don't keep bluegills and bass, or anything else that would be in there. So most of the folks here like trout and catfish, and in my talking to them, that's what they would like to keep. So we could do a sample stocking there and put it on the pond schedule. In addition, we'll also put bass and bluegill in it, as we proposed, and I think that, and they can catch and keep those. And so I think that that might be a viable solution, at least for the first year. And then we'll continue to talk to them over the year, and so will Fish and Game. Now, again, I want to caution council, I don't know if the Fish and Game Commission will actually approve this, you know, what we bring forward, but I think that this might be a better alternative at this time.
Rod, can you clarify, that would mean for an additional $1,000, that we would have both options? Is that what that means?
Yes. So in other words, we would go ahead and stock Water Ranch with trout and catfish as well, that they could catch and keep. But that would be the only species that they could catch and keep.
And that option, we might try for the year, see how it works, and come back and evaluate and go forward. Okay. So I think that, to Councilmember Daniels' question, that's another option that was not in the council communication.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to hear the thoughts of other councilmembers on that as well. But one thing, Rod, I did hear both sides calling for was that there be more oversight and more enforcement of the rules at Water Ranch, and perhaps utilizing some of the different and various groups to assist with that, recognizing that we have limited resources when it comes to our park rangers.
Yes, thank you for that comment. Yesterday, Tuesday, actually, executive team, they approved a new concept for the ranger program, which you'll be hearing about during the budget process, maybe just in a little while. And it basically converts some positions from three rangers to about eight, that will be able to help. And it's not to enforce, we like to take a supportive role, an ambassador role, an education role. And so the ranger program in concept will be changing, and I'll be presenting that to the Parks Board next month.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels, I think I'll do a quick poll. Are you in favor of that last option, or do you have an opinion at this point?
I'm not ready to commit.
Not ready to commit, that fish out of water, okay. Councilmember Taylor, any feedback you could give, just so I can do a quick poll to see where we stand?
I do like where that's going.
You like that last option? Vice Mayor Cook?
I have a question with Rod. Is it possible to maybe split the year in half and have two seasons, where there's a season of catch and keep, and then there's a season where it's catch and release? So maybe half the year, we can see how effective that is, you know, as it relates to the protection of wildlife. And then, then the other half, we allow, you know, and hopefully, maybe the enforcement part will come in. I'm just wondering if maybe there could be two seasons here that accommodate, and again, I'm not, I don't understand about the fish longevity as it gets hot, you know, maybe that season can kind of, you know, precursor that. Can you maybe share some thoughts about maybe what two seasons could look like as an option?
Yes, two seasons is basically what we are talking about. I think, if I understand your question correctly, you would be saying one season with treble hooks and barbs, like they do today, which would not protect the wildlife, as we discussed. Or are you suggesting that we look at two seasons for just all fish being taken out with the barbless hook? So there's a number of different scenarios that we-
Yeah, I was thinking more of splitting the year in, I don't know, six-month increments. You know, if I look at the year, and then within that year, you may have a season, and I don't know if it's six months or four months, but a season that's, you know, catch and keep, and then there's a season of catch and release. I'm just trying to understand if that's a potential option.
I'm not sure. I haven't spoke to Fish and Game about that. I mean, I could, I could do that, of course, if that's the council's desire to, for me to explore more options and bring that back.
And Rod, back to the option where it would be an additional $1,000 a year, would that option where it's a combination of both, in your opinion, be protecting the wildlife?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that would be different than this, okay? Councilmember Ray? And did you have any opinions? Okay, Councilmember Ray?
So I have a question. I've spent some time fishing there, and I've brought my son, and we weren't very successful in catching fish, but we've had some, a couple of the more experienced gentlemen here in the audience helped us, and we were able to catch fish, and so I appreciate their help. But my concern, I think, is somewhat what Councilmember Daniels mentioned, was the kind of lack of enforcement. Without enforcement, the amount of rules we put on this, it's not going to help, I don't think. I don't think we would have as many of the problems or concerns we've had with people coming late at night, with people leaving litter and things, if we had more enforcement. And so my concern is, we create additional rules, but if we're not following the current rules, why are we going to follow the new rules? And so I don't, I'm just not convinced that saying, okay, now we can't, we have to have barbless hooks, that that will solve this problem. And so that's where I have the biggest concerns, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Peterson?
I might surprise some people, but I generally agree with most of what I've heard as far as from the council members. And I think, I'm not sure there is one right answer to this. And I do share the concern about enforcement. I was thinking about this, if somebody's fishing, and you see them fishing, can you tell what kind of hook they have at the end? No. So I just think it's going to be really hard to enforce the difference. If we wanted to just get rid of fishing altogether, I'm not advocating for that, that'd be a lot easier to enforce. Obviously, if they've got a poll, they're not doing something they should be. So I share that concern that Councilmember Ray talked about. But I'm also with Councilmember Daniels, that we explore the options and see if there is some kind of a compromise that seems to generally benefit all interested parties, so.
So the summary, Rod, additional enforcement would be requested. And I know with limited resources, that phrase, easier said than done, but we would ask you to consider that into town leadership. Listening to the council members, there was really just one council member that I could tell how they might vote in a moment, and that would be Councilmember Taylor's taking your feedback, Councilmember Daniels, having a blend for the next year, and that would cost an additional $1,000, and it sounds like you're okay with the $1,000. I would support you on that. So there's two of us that would be ready to go that direction, and I think what that does, it's a good compromise for a year. I'm willing to do the $1,000, see how it goes. And so are we ready? And I realize some of the comments, but we can wait and do nothing, or we could choose that route, and so I'd be ready for a motion to see if we have enough support for that.
Mayor Lewis, just real quick, do we feel like as council, we have enough understanding of the new options? Okay, I'm not sure I do either. And so, Mayor, I'm wondering, can we continue this for a future meeting so that we can really explore some of the other options that would accommodate the needs? We, you know, we've listed our three priorities, but I'm not sure I'm ready to commit.
Okay, yes, absolutely. We can always continue any item. And we're not on a strict timeline here with Department of Fish and Game, and so we could bring it back at one of the future meetings.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Well, can we up our enforcement while we wait?
That's part of the budget item that's going to be brought forward.
Well, I'm wondering if what, I know you probably talked to the executive team, but is there something that we can accelerate a little sooner as it relates to our current staff, and maybe involve, I don't know, some other civilian patrol type of individuals to help out?
Because enforcement itself isn't part of our agenda item, per se, I think maybe we should make that a future agenda item if we want to, and I hate to delay it too because I think it's important, but it's really not specific to this agenda item.
Vice Mayor Peterson, or excuse me, Councilmember Peterson?
Almost got promoted. No, no, thanks, that's fine. But I agree with that comment, and I would like to look at other options as well. I mean, we've got a lot of people with a lot of passion for the wildlife, so there may be a way to run an enforcement program that's mostly volunteer, and they'd be happy to help. I'd like to look at all those options, low-cost options. But you're right, we need to discuss it more fully in a future meeting.
Councilmember Ray?
I think, having heard the councilmembers thus far, I think it's best to continue. I don't think there's votes one way or the other with doing-
I'll just make this comment, and maybe, Rod, you can give some clarification. It was very helpful, the emails this week, because this is a topic I hadn't been focused on, and both those for and against did a great job of educating. I probably spent hours in discussions and talking to a lot of people. The only hesitancy I have in not making a decision is, well, we bring everyone back, and we may have already had staff look at all the options. So let me just ask that question, and then I'm fine if we continue it. Do you anticipate that you'll bring back 10 different options, five options, or have you already looked at the options, and really, this is what we're hearing tonight?
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. I would suggest that there won't be much deviation to the options. The enforcement issue for staff is that we do enforce, and the issue is not people coming in and taking fish at night. That's not harmful to the wildlife, per se. It's the treble hooks that they use. And so until we address the treble hook and the barbs on the treble hook, and change to non-bait lures and flies, and/or flies, we will always have an interaction, a negative transaction with those wildlife. And so that's sort of, you know, the issue. And we can enforce that. All you have to do is have them bring their line in and look at the hook. It's easily done, as easy as asking them for our license. So I think, council, if I bring back, you know, even if it's multi-season, I would still highly recommend, because, you know, I've seen the pictures of the wildlife out there, and it is profound. It is, it is, it's not the ideal mix. And it's unfortunate, but that is a reality. So until we can change that, and change to barbless hooks that are single hook, I think, I think any option I bring back will have, hopefully have some element of that in it. And so that's, that's what I'll try to work with Fish and Game, see if maybe there's some other ideas out there that we, that I can bring back.
And that would be the reason to continue it. The reason to not continue it is that I think you presented a very good option that both protected the wildlife and for $1,000 gives the options. And we have some very passionate professional fishermen here that, and yes, we'll have some enforcement issues as we've had, but I think what you just said, those that have a certain fish they catch, they take it. Those that do the catch and release will give it back. But I, I'm in favor of moving forward, but if we don't have more than two of us, let's do a continue vote, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Lewis, not having, I've maybe been fly fishing twice, and real fishing, regular fishing, maybe 10 times in my life, so this isn't something that I claim to be an expert in whatsoever. But is the compromise, I guess, something that those on both sides can agree to? I don't know the answer to that unless we do a thumbs up, thumbs down of those who have spoken to us, because they only had one option in front of them. If everyone is comfortable with that as being a viable option, I'm not the fishing expert here, and I would look to those who are. But until tonight, that wasn't a written down, I mean, still isn't a written down option for us to follow, do we need to do more research on that? Or is that the option for the town? That's really what I'm, what I'm searching for here. I'm looking to the experts in the room to say-
Councilmember Daniels, I like that, and let's do this. Would all those who spoke tonight please stand, who already spoke? And this will just be a quick raw poll. The option that was presented, how many of you like it? Please raise your hand. Okay, thank you, hands down. The option that was just presented, those of you that don't like it, raise your hand. Okay, good point. Well, well noted, and that helps. You may be seated, thank you. So I think what Councilmember Daniels was saying, that possibly, the option would be- someone that everyone would agree to, but it's split 50-50, and that's good feedback. So, thanks for the question.
So, with that, Mayor, I move that we, did you have something?
Mayor, can I just ask, on the topic of enforcement, Rod, you mentioned a revision to the ranger program that's going to go through the Parks Commission in the next, so that's the second Tuesday of the month. If we continue this, would it be important for us to make the date after that? Would that change that enforcement discussion, or do you think it's neutral to that?
No, it's just an update. It's going to take many months to get the new ranger program up and running. There's also some improvements to the repairion as far as line of sight issues from the street that we're going to address after the new fiscal year as well. So, there are some things we're going to do to help with enforcement after hours. Those kind of things, we're already vetting out. Again, you know, I appreciate the council's time on this tonight, and I think, you know, I'll make an effort to outreach to everybody that was here tonight and hopefully bring back a unanimous decision for you all.
And if, to our town attorney, if we verbally are just feeling good about continuing it, do we need to have a formal motion and have a date associated with that?
Mayor, members of the council, you can just give direction to have it continued. Well, excuse me, there ought to be a motion that it's continued, it doesn't have to be continued to a particular date.
And Rod, is there a estimated timeframe about how long you would need?
Can you give me up to at least a meeting next month? Let's see, a second meeting in...
June 26th is our second meeting.
So, June 26th, all right. We'll entertain a motion, Councilmember Daniels?
I move that we continue item six to our June 26th meeting.
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Let's approve with a six of a vote, thank you. Before we move to, and thank you all for coming, it was great to have so many give input. Before we move to the public hearing, I wanted to make note on agenda item number eight, and this was tied to the home funds, that we do have a community needs assessment that we anticipate having presented to council in the next month or two. There have been some additional discussions related to home funds, and for the council to know, we will be receiving a plan for the use of home funds that will be discussed when the community needs assessment is presented. And this happened with some follow-up meetings that occurred to just make sure we were understanding internally what that meant with the funds being used in Chandler and with Scottsdale. So, thank you again for your feedback on that, and that's just an FYI that we have some tentative plans that will be coordinated when we talk about the community needs assessment that will help us with future decisions. The public hearing, items 28 through 37, let me first ask Councilmember Taylor, do we have some citizens that wish to speak on certain items?
Yes, Mayor, we have three request-to-speak cards for item 31.
Thank you. And from a council perspective, are there some items that councilmembers wish to have some, either presentations from town, resources, or discussion? So, just 31?
Obviously, budget as well.
All right.
37.
37, obviously. So, 36A, so 36A, 37, and 31. So, as stated on the agenda, items 28 through 37 will be heard at a public hearing. And we have three that wish to speak on 31, and so they filled out the public comment forms, and so I'm going to proceed with that feedback from the council to open the public hearing on agenda items 28 through 30 and 32 through 36.
Mayor, item 30 is removed.
And having item 30 removed, thank you. So, I will not open the public hearing on agenda item 30, thank you for that help, which means that we will leave 31 and 36A and 37 for a separate public hearing. And I will now close the public hearing on those items I just mentioned, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda items 28, 29, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Let's approve with a six of a vote, thank you. I now open the public hearing on agenda item 31, and we have three individuals that wish to speak. Before we have the three citizens speak, why don't we have a quick overview from town staff about what 31 encompasses, and then we'll proceed with the public comments?
All right, Mayor and council, thank you. I'm Tom Condon, I'm the interim town engineer. This item is related to our typical undergrounding requirements for electrical utilities. We do have, by our code, all development is required to place any electrical utilities that are 12 KV or under, as well as communication lines and other things underground at time of development. This particular case is the American Orchards project. It is located at the southeast corner of Lindsay and Guadalupe. And you can see by the photos, I've got a few photos to show you here, the site. So, this particular photo shows the entrance to the site. The next one is just looking down Guadalupe Road. This is to the east from the intersection of Guadalupe and Lindsay. And the following one is actually looking west from the other end of the site along Guadalupe. The town does allow waiver request, and that's what the applicant has requested here, is a waiver of our underground requirements, and that's for the 12 KV and existing communication lines underneath the 69 KV lines. And so, in accordance with our municipal code, they've requested the waiver, and they've provided some information. They believe that it's primarily an economic hardship, I believe, and they've also stated in their request that they believe that minimal benefits have accrued at the town. One of the things I'll point out is that this is actually the first time that staff has recalled ever having a waiver request of this kind, so it is rather unique. It's been on, this particular code has been in the books since 1984. So, I also, there was a request during the work-study session a couple of days ago to compare some of the, here's a comparison of the way that the site would look. On the left, it's the before picture, and that's the picture from our applicants on this, and to the right is a picture on Guadalupe Road, a little bit further east. It's a little bit hard to see with this resolution on the photos, but you can see there is, it is quite a bit cleaner underneath the poles, and really, that's what we're trying to gain from this, this removal of the, undergrounding of the lines. And let's see. And one more picture, one more comparison, and this is just, again, looking at the intersection of Lindsay and Guadalupe on the left, and then the intersection of Val Vista and Guadalupe on the right. And again, you can see, it's just definitely a cleaner look, and that's what we're trying to get. The question before you tonight is whether you'd like to consider the waiver request by the applicant. Do you have any questions for me?
Councilmember Daniels?
Just one, thanks. In areas that were developed prior to 1984, when this code was on the books, what do we, how do we address those 12 KV lines and communication lines? How do we, do we underground those, and who pays for it, and how do we accomplish that?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Daniels. The SRP right now, we actually are served by both APS in the center of town and SRP, the remainder of town. SRP has a unique program that they started, I think it was about seven or eight years ago, where they put us, they set aside a certain percentage of the construction dollars they spend in our community for aesthetic funds. And those funds are, they're earmarked, they're set aside for our community to use to underground 12 KV lines. There's very limited things that we can do. We can also put walls around substations, do landscaping around substations, do some limited work on SRP canal if we have a trail system along there, those types of things. But we do get monies from that, and we have used them in the past, and will continue to use them as they're available to do undergrounding of this type in those older areas that came in before the ordinance was adopted.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Tom, thanks for your help on this item. I've certainly asked you a lot of questions. I appreciate all your help. Remind me what you said about those funds, the aesthetic funds. If we had the choice, and we got limited funds, and we don't, we only have funds to either underground poles that just have the 12 KV's on them, and eliminate the poles completely versus poles that have, you know, the 69 KV and the 12s, which ones would we choose to use those dollars for?
So, Councilmember Peterson, I think, again, just strictly from an aesthetic point of view, if you're looking at taking a pole that just has 12 KV on it and totally removing it so there is no obstruction to view, obviously, that's a much cleaner look, and the priority might be to do that rather than to take lines off of 69 KV pole and still leave the pole in place. I think there could be, there could be a priority for areas where we're looking on economic development or other reasons that you might take exception to that and put some of the 12 KV underground, but I do think on, as a general rule, the 12 KV poles that just have 12 KV on them would be the first priority.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, let's have our three citizens that wish to speak have that opportunity.
Mayor Lewis, we have three request-to-speak cards. Mr. Casey Baumforth does not wish to speak, but would just, for the record, like to be in for the issue.
Thank you.
We'll invite...
And the other two, and as I looked at these cards, and this will help, when we say "for," if you can clarify when you come forward, "for," denying or not denying, that would be helpful. Because the wording here can be a little tricky, but then you'll be able to clarify that, so please.
Very good. We'll invite Mr. Ben Searle to the podium, and then Mr. Jeff Wimmer.
And as you saw earlier with our fishing discussion, if you can state your name, if you're a Gilbert resident for the record, and then you'll be given two minutes to speak, please.
Thank you, esteemed Mayor Lewis and councilmembers. I'm Ben Searle, and a Gilbert resident, one of the two local partners in the business here that we are aiming to develop, and so, I obviously am in favor of requesting the waiver or obtaining the waiver. And for a couple of reasons, you know, our passion is to take care of seniors, and given the demographics of the local area here, there's a strong need for it. And the parcel itself has been exceptionally challenging to develop, given its rectangle shape, also the canals there, and different soil issues, there's a bunch of mounds and so on, and so, it's become a really, to a critical point to feasibly develop this property to give seniors a great care option. And the lines, looking at the picture here, I'm not a complete expert, but looking at, it's just the lowest lying line is the 12 KV line, from what I understand. So, all the other lines will remain. And looking at the other comparable pictures, I don't think you'll gain, or we don't feel that the aesthetics will be gained. And we want the site to be very aesthetically pleasing to the city and so on, and, but anyway, so that's one of the reasons we've kind of come to a critical point that's, we're at a really sensitive spot with this, and it's a really, you know, we think, an undue hardship given the financial cost. And in there, it references, you know, about an $80,000 price tag for a project of this site that's significant and substantial. And in addition, that would be the minimum if there's any complications when we go underline with, underground with that, with other utilities or, you know, compactions, there's additional risks. So, anyway, I would just ask for your support to give us the waiver, and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Is there a way to turn this on?
Tom, if you can help get, there's a display, or...
It says camera.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Wimmer. I'm a civil engineering consultant for the project. I'm a Towne Gilbert resident, and I am in support of approving the waiver for this site. And there's a number of reasons, which Ben explained some of them. You can see a large amount of retention along the front, on both corners, because of the 50 by 250 landscape easement that's there. You can see the extreme customization in the shape of these billings because of the difficulty of the site and the triangular shape. And because of medical facility, there's a lot of costs and expense in the site, a lot of dollars per square foot. And they would like to use the monies to go into the building and the amenities in the building and to make it a place that feels like home for the senior citizens that will be here, be cared for, and probably live out the remainder of their lives, many of them. I wanted to point out that along Guadalupe Road for miles in both directions, the 12 KV lines are on the poles with the 69 KV lines. It's continuous up and down Guadalupe Road. And so, what SRP has suggested is taking down these two sections, these two sections of 12 KV lines that would essentially make this the only section along Guadalupe Road for several miles that would not have 12 KV lines on them. And essentially, that would be an anomaly in this corridor and provide little benefit to the town. So, aesthetics, the developers don't need it, don't care for it. It has minimal aesthetically, aesthetic benefit to the town. This client is coming in to bring a new tax base and an important facility to Towne Gilbert, which those taxes would be able to be used over time to pay for the 12 KV lines coming down. If the town decided to at some point take those lines down, that tax base would be there to help do that. At this point, it would be a financial burden on the developers to do that at this time, that they would take monies away from what they would like to put in their facility and to have for those people to help take care of them. So, I know it's normal to take down the 12 KV lines in Gilbert and in surrounding communities, but at this site in particular, we have a 400-foot frontage where you'll take down 12 KV lines just on these two sections. They'll stay crossing Lindsay Road, there won't be that benefit. And so, we'd like your, I guess you'd like to consider these points in allowing us to have kind of a unique situation where our tax dollars pay for this down the road versus upfront hit on the project. Thank you.
Jeff, before you sit down, and Tom, this will be a similar question for both of you. I'm trying to understand, in the council communication, it talks about the financial impact, and what I'm hearing you say is that if this is not waived, there's additional costs for you. And have you estimated what those costs are? And I balance that, Tom, with the way this is worded, there's no financial impact to the town if we deny it, but there could be up to $80,000 if we waive it. And part of the question is, the way this is worded, that may not be needed, but it could be, and I'll ask for the probability of that in just a minute. But back to the first question, do you have an estimate of what the cost will be for you?
Mayor Lewis, I appreciate the comment. SRP based their costs, or approximated their cost at roughly $80,000. That does not include the developers' cost to install a conduit and put everything in place, and it, as Ben, one of the owners said, it does not include any unforeseen conflicts with other utilities. Their site in Apache Junction had a $40,000 estimate, it ended up costing over $300,000 to do a similar thing. So, that cost could significantly grow easily on a site like this, and where it has really limited benefit to the town visually or any other reason, it's something that has a significant impact on this project.
Thank you. And Tom, to the other question, the way this is worded, is there high probability that we would potentially be paying $80,000, low probability? we would potentially be paying the $80,000, low probability? What's your feedback?
Mayor and council, I think that, again, because of the situation we have with SRP and these aesthetics fund, there is a prioritization of projects throughout the town. I think there's a reasonable possibility, because this is on Guadalupe Road and fairly close to the town's center area, we do have at this moment something like $6 million, maybe closer to $7 million of available funds in SRP aesthetics, and that grows every year. I think there is a very good chance that in, sometime in the future, it may be five years, it may be 10 years in the future, that the town would say, this is a good, now this is a good time, and this is the right priority for using those funds. And again, if it isn't done with this project, the town would then have to come up with those funds.
Okay, thank you. We, I'll make this comment, we are excited about this project, and we wanted to go forward, and let's get some feedback from the council on how to proceed. Councilmember Daniels?
I have a couple of questions, Tom, that you could probably help me with. If this, if this project was to be done in conjunction with the rest of Guadalupe, perhaps when we do decide to use SRP aesthetic funds, does the cost of the individual product, project actually decline because of the scale in which that we're operating?
Councilmember Daniels, I think that there can be a benefit, a cost differential, but I don't believe it's terribly great. I think, for example, if we did a full mile, it might, instead of being $80,000, it might be more like $65,000. So that's the type of a benefit that you might see.
Okay. And then, as another point of clarification, you did mention that this is the only time in essentially 30 years that someone has asked for a waiver from this. Is that correct?
In my research, that's, and the people I've talked to who have actually been around for about that long, yeah, that's what I've understood. I personally own a bin here for less than two, but yes.
Okay. So, Mayor, I'm uncomfortable saying that we're going to grant a waiver for one particular project, but I also recognize that in the economies of scale, that this is a very small section of a very long segment that we, as a town, are going to likely be responsible for undergrounding ourselves. So I maybe look to legal to say, are we allowed to perhaps collect dollars from the developer that would allow us to apply those to undergrounding when we do the project in its entirety? And perhaps, I realize I'm putting on the spot, Mike, and maybe even thinking out of the box here, but is that an option for us, particularly in an area like this where it's an older area of town and we do have such a substantial amount to, to take care of?
Mayor Lewis, Councilman Daniels, agreements can be entered into that, over the course of time, would require contribution for the anticipated projects. Yes, some type of development agreement could be entered into.
I don't know what that looks like, Mayor, but I feel like that might be a healthy compromise where we are able to accommodate both the growth and we're not just granting a blanket waiver to a developer when we haven't done that in the last 30 years, at least that we can find.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Ray?
This puts Councilmember Daniels a little bit on the spot. Are you, are you asking that they would pay $80,000 now and we would hold it, or they'd pay the $65,000 number that might be the lower price?
I'm thinking similar to a development agreement that we've done when we expand roadway, but we need to expand it prior to the development actually occurring where they agree to pay for whatever their percentage is of the entire project. And obviously, development agreement has a certain lifespan to it.
So were you asking for money upfront that we hold in escrow for them, or just an IOU that at some point we go back and collect?
Yeah, I don't think we ever collect at, in a development agreement of that type. I don't believe that that's how we've done development agreements when it comes to road construction, but I would sort of leave that piece up to legal if there needs to be like a good faith deposit. I don't, I don't know how that works.
One of my concerns with that, and I, it makes sense from a compromise standpoint, one of my concerns is if we, in my understanding, when we do, when we widen a road and we put a lien or we put some sort of bill on that, when they build out, they then have to pay that. I'd be a little bit hesitant here to have someone build out and then later come back and try to get money from them when they could be out of business, they could have sold it, they could be under a different entity. It seems like, and I'm not the town attorney, Mike knows this better than I do, but it just seems like that would be opening up a lot of potential concerns to do that. But I, it makes sense, the compromise side. For me on this project, I think we're going to take down one row of lines, yet we're going to have the rest of it up there. So the end goal of making it aesthetically pleasing, I'm not sure we're really accomplishing that by doing this. But I also am concerned that we start some sort of precedence that says this is not that big of a deal anymore. We have other areas in town, and this may be a bad example, but you look at Rome Towers that has the lines out in front of it, and maybe that's a reason why it's not developing as quickly and getting tenants as quickly as we want over there. I don't know, but I am hesitant to put some sort of precedence on this after so many years of the code.
I had Vice, Councilmember Peterson, and then we'll go Vice Mayor Cook.
Mayor, it's really interesting tonight. I have, first I have a quick question for Mike. Mike, are we allowed to continue this to see if there could be an agreement made between us and the parties, or do they have a right to an answer tonight on their application?
Mayor, Councilman Peterson, the council has a right to continue it.
I ask that because I think it's, it's something worth exploring. If, one of the things I think about when I hear all these different things going on is that we have priorities for our funds too, and our priorities are first to the, where they have the most impact, which are not with these poles, but with the shorter ones, the 12 KV's, they can all go away. So my point is, if we really believe in the impact and the benefit of this project at some future date, we'll come along and be willing to commit some of those funds to that, and that'll prove the value, and maybe the, you know, developer will be happy at that point to be a participant in that if we get to that point. But I, I don't know what they're willing to agree to do. If we're going to vote on this tonight, though, I agree that the cost to benefit, if that's what we're supposed to do here tonight, and it's interesting because we're sort of taking off our policymaking hat and being judicial in a sense that we're supposed to say, does it meet this definition in order to decide if we grant a waiver or not? And I will just say, I think this section of the code needs work because it's anything but clear. But based on my understanding of it, I would grant the waiver because I do think in this scenario, we've even said, this would be a lower priority scenario to underground. I think the benefit is pretty minimal, the costs could be very substantial. So that's where I would go. So I would say we either continue and see if the developer's willing to work with an agreement, or I would be in favor of granting a waiver.
One question along that line before Vice Mayor Cook. If we continued it for the project, is there a time factor, something that if this is delayed, will have a negative impact to the project?
Mayor Lewis, it is a time-sensitive issue. The longer that the process is started, if they have to pull down the lines and do that, it's, in fact, we need to clarify what the actual effect from the town is, whether the CFO gets held up or something like that. We need to clarify the actual effect if, if something were delayed, but it is a time-sensitive issue.
Sure, thank you. And that, that may be a hard question to answer, exactly the impact, but I think, one more question to Tom on that note, and then to Vice Mayor Cook, if, if we ask tonight to have some more dialogue, a potential development agreement, there is, and this might even be Georgetown clerk, there is for the June 5 meeting, a cutoff of when we need to have council or communication packets prepared. When is that date? And then to Tom is, could this be prepared in that time period? So in other words, is this feasible to bring back June 5, or is that too quick? And I'll, I'll merge the two together, and then I'm going right to Vice Mayor Cook. What's the deadline for the next June 5 meeting?
Mayor Lewis, the current deadline for the June 5 meeting for council reports is May 22nd at noon.
Okay. So that's a week from today. Does that give enough time?
Mayor Lewis, I think a lot of it will depend on, because it's a development agreement, we'll have to talk about terms and things like that. It could be we could get to that point fairly quickly, and we can, we can certainly work on that and try. I think it's, it's a reasonable goal.
And I realize that, that we might have the whole packet prepared, and that could be an exception, that it could come closer to June 5. Vice Mayor Cook, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Along Guadalupe Road for, you know, both, you know, maybe a mile to the east and a mile to the west, this is probably the only parcel of land I think is undeveloped, maybe next to the fire station to the east. Would this be the only section for miles that would actually be underground for that many feet? Is that what I'm visualizing here?
Yes, Vice Mayor Cook, it is, I went out in the field and did an investigation of that very thing, and it is at least a mile to the east up to Val Vista, and at Val Vista, it begins to be undergrounded. So it is about a mile, and then I'm, I did not check it out, but as, in a bird's eye view from Lindsey, it looked as if, and I believe that the 12 KV would extend certainly all the way to Gilbert Road.
Gilbert Road. So Mayor, right now, I'm thinking, because that's just a little piece, I think I'm in favor of the waiver unless we do something different.
Okay. So the council, listening to these comments, it seems like we would, and I don't know if there's enough support for the waiver, but I've heard at least two comment on it that we could either go that direction or, without putting a major negative impact, see if there could be some more dialogue and try and have it ready for the June 5 meeting. And so, Councilmember Daniels, do you?
I am not in favor of a waiver at all, only because for 30 years, we've required this out of developers, and I don't think that that's fair to the ones for years. At the same time, I don't want to hinder development of this particular site, and I think it is a valuable project. And at that point, I, again, because this is a very specific instance with very specific requirements, I would like us to work with the applicant and perhaps come up with an agreement.
And Councilmember Peterson, you said you'd be okay with that too. So let me just ask the seven of us, if we asked to have it continued with the desire to have this dialogue take place with a potential development agreement by June 5, does that work for the council tonight? Councilmember Ray?
Just a quick comment, Mayor. I would prefer that we move forward tonight. I think that we're setting, we're going down a road now where we're making it an option to do a development agreement with any person that comes to the town who wants to build something. I know we're saying that's not our intent, but when we let one company come forward and let's do a specific development agreement on the power lines with them, I don't know how we then tell the next company no. And we can say, well, it's different circumstances, they have a bigger property, the lines around them. I don't think that it's wise as a council to go in and make a one-off development agreement, something that we've never done before, and we may never do again, but I don't think that's the best decision. I would be in favor of just moving forward tonight with the vote.
And would you be in favor of a waiver or not a waiver?
I would not.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I want to, there is a section of our town code that considers an exception. They have a right to apply for that exception, and we have a duty to apply that section as we understand it. And so whatever we think the policy should be, we do need to discuss, and I think the section is written poorly, and I would agree with that. I don't, I think the way it's written now could very well lead to some very kind of chaotic or arbitrary and capricious kinds of rulings based on this. It's just so unclear. So I'm with others on that, and as far as what's the precedent we're setting and all those things, I'm concerned about that too. But for tonight, there is a section of the code that gives them a right to a fair review of whether or not they meet those criteria that are there, and, and the intent there, which is a cost to benefit analysis. And if we all feel that the minute, the benefit is minimal, especially in light of the cost, that relationship is not, is not a positive one, then I think we have a duty to waive because that's what our code provides for. Now, others have not applied for it, it's true. And I'm very uncomfortable with one at a time things as well, and so I would like to look at the code and get it more clear. I want to be clear on that. I'm also not one of these, let's do a favor for one that we're not going to do for others. I totally agree. But I'm just saying, they do have that right, and so we have to put aside what we think the code should be and read it tonight about what it is. And I'm hearing everyone else agree that the, the impact benefit is minimal. And so to me, it seems like we should, we should be going that way. Obviously, there's difference of opinion, that's fine, I just wanted to reiterate.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Taylor, you'll help bring this to closure.
I'm, I'm in favor of the waiver and think the cost benefit shows that the benefit is minimal.
Okay. I close the public hearing on Agenda Item 31, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Please.
I move to approve the application for waiver on Item 31.
Wait a second.
Okay. Please vote. That's approved with a four to vote. Thank you. I open the public hearing on Agenda Item 36A. And we had no request to speak, and so I think this was more, did we have someone on the council that wanted to talk about 36A? Vice Councilmember Peterson, please.
Mayor, we talked at pretty great length on this. I want to first agree that there is some more analysis we ought to do, especially for future years on this issue. But I'm not going to support a property tax increase in terms of rate or total levy. As Councilmember Daniels pointed out, in previous years, we kept the rate the same and the total levy dropped each year. So this would be the first time since I've been on the council that we've faced a recommended tax levy from staff that was an increase. So that makes me uncomfortable. I think, at least for this year, we've got, it's about $400,000, and keep in mind, that's of a million dollars, that is contingency, if you will. I'm not saying it's not good to have that. I'm just saying there's a chance we won't even dip into that, and if we do, this is for delinquencies. So I don't know how many of those stay outstanding forever, but I'm sure a lot of them are just late getting collected, and a lot of times we will get the money back. I'm just saying, there's a way to do this, at least this year, we don't have to raise property tax as a total or as a rate, we can avoid that. And I just want to remind, you know, it's, our financial policies don't say you can't use ongoing money for one-time costs. It says just the opposite. In fact, during the sales tax increase debate, it was this opposite argument that you can't use one-time money for ongoing expenses. That faced the only two council members still on this council from that time, and they rejected the argument because of their commitment not to raise taxes. In that case, the financial policies actually were at odds with their plan to use one-time funds to balance the budget, but they were firm against the increase, which I applauded them for, and I still do, because the money was there. I fully understand that as a policy, you can't continue to use one-time funds for ongoing expenses. That's all my effort, that's what all my effort is, to make sure we aren't overdoing the ongoing expenses with my metric, okay? But the very principle behind building, repair, and replacement funds, if you think about it, is just that, to use ongoing money to prepare for one-time expenses. That's fine, that's not a problem. So now, we're concerned we can't afford the half million this year, I've got lots of ways we could save money, you've heard them before, I'm happy to talk about them, but I'm sure we can do that. It's, it's not a big commitment, we can do some further analysis, we're not making any long-term commitments to future years, and I think there will be a way that we can make this work without property tax increases in future years either. But I'm open to the fact that we have some more homework to do, so.
And Councilmember Peterson, to clarify, and I appreciate your comments in the study session, you would be in favor of the 18,000, excuse me, 18 million, lost that. So if we had a figure, let's say 18,576,087.50, you're in favor of that?
So the number is 19,092,000, because that's the exact number we levied last time, if I'm reading the packet properly, and if Don's here and I'm wrong... time, if I'm reading the packet properly, and if Dawn's here and I'm wrong, I hope she'll correct me. Is that the right number? Okay. So if we use that number, that would be about 400,000 short of what staff's recommending. I acknowledge that. But it would be keeping the total levy from going up. And so, that's the number I would be in favor of.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
I think I just need to get clarification. So, Councilmember Peterson, you are still indicating, as you did on Tuesday, that we should take general fund dollars to apply to our debt service payment to make up the difference. Okay. I just want to make sure I understood. I still have a problem with that, but I did think of another reason over the last couple of days of why I'm so uncomfortable with that. And one of the main reasons is if I own one property and you own 20 properties, we are now taking from the sum of the total sales tax and other forms of tax, and now we're using those dollars to subsidize, if you will, the 19 other properties that you own. Because now you are paying not just for your own property tax or your, the one designated property, but now you want everyone else to pay for the other 19 properties that you own. And to me, that's fundamentally the wrong way for us to accomplish that. Each person, as you stated before many times, needs to pay their own way, right? We're all paying our own taxes. And because of the disproportionate, maybe some people own multiple properties in town, but now we're taking from the sum of everyone, we're actually redistributing now the tax dollars of everyone and paying for each other's, if you will, property taxes. And because of that reason, among many others, even though I dislike the way that this is, the law has been written, even though I dislike some of the chains, if you will, that have been wrapped around us, to be able to keep people's property tax at a steady level as we have for the last 10 years, I would rather change the tax rate to make it so that everyone pays their own share, if that makes sense.
Other comments? Vice Mayor Cook?
Well, what's fascinating for me is what the state legislation has done with all the municipalities. And to me, some of the discussion that we've had here was really to try to maybe help correct what they made as a mistake, and I don't agree with that. I think that by moving forward, the outcry of our public will go back to the state legislation so that they realize kind of the mistake that they did. So it's not, to me, in my mind, something that we should try to help cover up and help what the state legislature has done to our community. Our community should know that, you know, this is what they've done to us. And, you know, and I think they'll, hopefully will hear from our citizens that this wasn't right. We liked the old model better. It allowed our citizens to have easier time to forecast and plan their own budgets, and I think that model should be returned back to the way it was.
Would that mean that you'd be in favor of just the way the motion is written? Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
I just, I'm thinking about what Councilmember Daniels said and about the multiple properties. You know, in an HOA, if you own multiple properties, you get a vote for each property. So you could say those people who are getting taxed over and over and over again because they own multiple properties, it's kind of like, wow, I've got lots of taxation but only a very little representation. So there's different ways to look at what's fair here, okay? HOAs do it a different way. The other thing I would point out is, people who own multiple properties tend to also spend more money and pay more consumption taxes. So I mean, you're never going to get it exactly equal in those terms. I'm sure you're not. But at the end of the day, if I have to choose between, you know, having a consumption tax, which is more freely in control of the consumer, because they are spending however they will, they can save or they can spend, or owning property and not really ever owning it, because if you don't pay your property tax, it will be taken from you. You will lose your property. If you can't, I know lots of people, I know a lot of people who could not afford the property tax bill and lost their property for it. I'm just saying, well, you want to choose between taxes to favor, I would rather, any day, take an opportunity to use a little extra sales tax to make sure a property tax is lower. And as far as everyone equal and paying their fair share, I don't know how you're going to make that equation work exactly. It's an interesting thought, but again, I would favor lower property taxes every time.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Ray?
I appreciate the comments that have been made. I think that we're ready to move forward, Mayor. I don't want to use general fund money to pay off debt. I think that's, we've been talking a lot of precedents tonight. I don't like that idea. When we look at this, the average taxpayer will see a decrease in their town property bill, or in their town portion of the property tax bill. I don't like what we're doing here, but I feel like, as Vice Mayor Cook said, the state legislature created something that I'm not sure they meant to do exactly this, but it doesn't matter, it's happened. And so I think we move forward with it. The average taxpayer, again, will see a decrease in their tax bill, and I'm ready to make a motion and move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Peterson's recommendation doesn't bother me too much. You know, there's the age-old, you know, principle in the good times, you kind of pack away for a rainy day and you pay down debt, and, you know, we're seeing very strong reserves. We're seeing strong sales taxes. So for me, that's where it changes the discussion a little bit. I don't know if I agree with Councilmember Cook in terms of, you know, making the citizens feel the pain and then call the legislature. I don't know that I'm following that. I don't think that's a good way to decide a vote. But I agree with his larger point, which is, hey, you know, they've put us in a tough spot, and it's something that they should get feedback on, no question about it. So because we have such strong sales tax income to level this out so that we don't increase this levy or the rate, you know, I think the intent also is, we should give them the full benefit as well, and we're giving them most of the benefit, you know, with this particular motion, instead of really the full benefit, where they're already paying a lot in sales tax. I think that's, because it's so strong, I think that's a reasonable proposal for me.
Okay, thank you. Don, please. And Councilmember Ray's comment was very helpful, and if you could just confirm, we talked about this in the study session, because I do have a feeling, and I'm a little bit worried because I'm seeing a 3-3 vote, that I could support Councilmember Peterson's comment. I do think it's not the best to use general funds, but at the same time, it makes sense to me. But I also know that you said on Tuesday that the average, as Councilmember Ray said, the average Gilbert resident will still be paying less. Could you clarify that? And I know from a utility perspective, we have maybe 60,000 residents, and that's not exactly, I mean, some are multi-housing and so forth, but of the six, let's just say of the 60,000, 70,000, what percent would be paying less?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Dawn Buckland with the Office of Management and Budget. The way that the calculation would work, the, basically, although we're not looking at a rate, the effective rate would be reduced. And so, when we looked at the average property bill, a property that was worth $250,000, according to the 2014, would have been paying, I believe it was 235, and then in 2015, it would be paying 215 for the year. So $215,000, I believe, was the number that we had on Tuesday for the year for 250,000 square foot home. The exceptions to that would be if, for some reason, a particular property increased in value at a higher rate than what we were seeing throughout the town, or if exceptional improvements were made to a given property, of course, they would see a difference in that rate. Really where we're seeing the increase in the total levy would be because we have additional improvements that have been made, commercial developments, those types of things that are on the tax rolls now, and new residential that are on the tax rolls now that weren't there last year.
Okay, thank you. So, we close the public hearing on Agenda Item 37, and...
Mayor, with regards to Agenda 37, you have to recess a regular meeting.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
And convene a special meeting.
We, no, and I was reminded of that, and I was just full speed ahead. We recess our, is there a motion to recess a regular meeting at this point? And move into a special
and I appreciate, I think that's time well spent looking at that. You know, the rate
meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
of inflation really represents the, you know, the household income growth, household cost
Aye.
I thought so. So, we now go into our special meeting, and I open the public hearing on Agenda Item 37. Is that proper?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. We had discussion in our study session on 37, and we did follow-up individually,
growth. And I think it's really important that the burden that we put on them as a government pace with what they're feeling in their household income, in the house.
and we may be ready to proceed unless we need some further dialogue. And so I could
You know, I really see that this is a kitchen-table matter in a lot of ways. And a lot of kitchen
close this special meeting and we could have a vote if we're ready. Do you have some comments,
tables are dealing with much higher costs. There's certainly earlier reports in terms
Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah.
of the CPI going up a little faster, in terms of just groceries. We know what Obamacare
Please.
has done to the healthcare market in taking huge increases in the private sector. We obviously haven't seen that here in the town benefits, but in the private sector, there's been some massive increases in terms of what people are paying for healthcare insurance. And so, I think it's just important, as we look at the budget, that we're sensitive to what's happening in Gilbert homes. And so, as I mentioned in the study session, I wanted to come back with a specific number and then some ways to substantiate that, but I don't want it to. So let me just kind of put this out here as some follow-up thoughts. I circled back with Councilmember Peterson and I said, the rate of inflation, and just talked a little bit more about what would be a reasonable number here to keep this at a reasonable pace. And the basic number I'll put forth here is 6.7 million, less than what we have. So, the question obviously is, how do we get to that?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you would ask. So, instead of giving the exact answer, I don't have the exact answer. I have directions that my recommendation is, is to share with town management, and then happy to work between now and the act, so to approve 6.7 million less than what we have, which is a small fraction of what the total is looking for, and then continue to work with town management on a few key areas to get to this. So let me just outline a couple of things here. We referred from Councilmember Peterson on a paid holiday issue. That's probably costing taxpayers about a million dollars a year. So there's some easy money there for about a million dollars. He can explain more about the intricacies of that. I outlined a few of the new hires that I think we need to scrutinize a little bit more carefully. And I, you know, the digital communication specialist, I'm not sure about that one. The HR position, I know it's a .25. During the building co-discussion, we were told that we wouldn't have any more inspectors. There's two inspectors under long-term agreements that are put forward under this. So in that bucket of future hires, I think there's some opportunity there to add to it. I applaud the town in terms of past refinancing of some debt, and they've been able to get some substantial wins. I'm not sure what opportunities there. We could certainly look at that. And we certainly passed the HRIS system, but there was opportunities there. That cost was a little higher than I thought really we should put on the group. So there's other things there, but I guess my recommendation here is to continue it with the rate of inflation, to respect what the burden of town government is on our houses, to the tune of 6.7 million. Looking at some of those categories, perhaps there's other ideas here that we could continue to work with. But if we approve that number, and then come back and see what their recommendation is, you know, in our June meeting when we finalize that, are my thoughts. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just explain this last graph because there was some confusion about inflation and how it works with some of the graphs I saw from staff. I didn't really know what they were trying to accomplish. They're certainly not illustrating the same thing I'm trying to do here, and I don't want to explain that. What I did was, I did a different graph. I took, I got rid of the inflation line by just incorporating it. In other words, what I did was, I took all of the ongoing costs per citizen and converted them all to $2,001. In other words, the dollars of 2001, that year. Okay? So obviously, the dollars in 2001, per dollar, you had more buying power. So I've changed all of our costs to be in that same term, so I have controlled for inflation. So the relationship between the dots represents a change in real cost, okay? Real cost meaning controlling for inflation. So if I would not have factored in inflation, I'm sure staff really would have been jumping down my throat, because I would have been saying, hey, we've almost doubled in cost. Well, okay, what about the last 15 years of inflation? Okay, valid argument. So I've incorporated that. So you can see, though, fiscal years, you know, '11, '12, '13, we were pretty close to where we'd been in a lot of the years past. The differences are a little exaggerated. You'll notice it's only $10 between each line. But so it was pretty close in line there with those years. But then '14, which is the, you know, I voted for the budget in '13, you know, I thought we were in pretty good shape. '14 and '15, we've just gotten so much higher than I think we should be in real costs. Now, I want to compliment, look, we've got a little bit of dip there. Looks like it's heading down a little. That's good. I mean, I could call that an improvement and call it a day. I just think there's so many untapped opportunities that, it's low-hanging, it is low-hanging fruit. The 410s, Patrick, I remember, that was something that, and I'm sure he's hearing me, but I believe I had a commitment on that to handling this issue before the fiscal year, and I still haven't heard back. It's real value to the citizens. It's going to decrease our need for new staff, because there are many FTE that that million equals, that we then do not have to hire new people to fill those demands. And so, we need to get at these issues, and hopefully this can be an impetus for that in the next discussion for the final budget. But that's got to be solved, some other things too. You know, I just would reiterate, I think we overdid it with the wages issue, and maybe that's time, that's water on the ridge, but I know that's one of our major things driving that. And if there's any discussion on that, with total compensation being above market now, I would love to have that conversation. But if we can do nothing else but to solve the 410s this year, I'd be very happy. Hopefully, we can do that by the final budget. But with that, Mayor, I just think there's too many opportunities that are no-brainers we haven't done yet, that I'm not ready to support this budget, and that's, I guess I'll be quiet. I'll be quiet now.
That is a nice, that is a nice trend from the study session, so I like that. Let's, let me get some more quick feedback. Councilmember Daniels?
I think I'm still trying to figure out how we get to 6.7 million dollars with the three, essentially three items that you've suggested here. And if, is that just, is the 6.7 just a percentage of...
I just think there's so many untapped opportunities that, it's low-hanging, it is low-hanging fruit. The 410s, Patrick, I remember, that was something that, I'm sure he's hearing me, but I believe I had a commitment on that to handling this issue before the fiscal year, and I still haven't heard back. It's real value to the citizens, it's going to decrease our need for new staff, because there are many FTE that that million equals, that we then do not have to hire new people to fill those demands. And so, we need to get at these issues, and hopefully this can be an impetus for that in the next discussion for the final budget. But that's got to be solved, some other things too. You know, I just would reiterate, I think we overdid it with the wages issue, and that maybe that's, that's time, that's water on the ridge, but I know that's one of our major things driving that, and if there's any discussion on that, with, with total compensation being above market now, I would love to have that conversation. But if we can do nothing else but to solve the 410s this year, I'd be very happy. Hopefully, we can do that by the final budget. But with that, Mayor, I just think there's too many opportunities that are no-brainers we haven't done yet, that I'm not ready to support this budget, and that's, I guess I'll be quiet, I'll be quiet now.
That is a nice, that is a nice trend from the study session, so I like that. Let's, let me get some more quick feedback. Councilmember Daniels?
I think I'm still trying to figure out how we get to 6.7 million dollars with the three, essentially three items that, that you've suggested here. And if, is that just, is the 6.7 just a percentage of the overall budget, or is it, are there actuals behind that that add up to 6.7 with some data behind it?
Well, 6.7 is 1.2% of what is being proposed here. And, and that's really more how we get to the number, instead of substantiating it. Could we do that? Yeah, absolutely. I wanted, I didn't want to hamstring Patrick and his team with specifics where he might have better recommendations or better ways to approach that, so I wanted to just directionally give some high points, but with that target, work with him to meet that goal. Thank you.
Mayor Lewis, in 2009, when we, you and I first got elected, we went through some substantially difficult times in, in the town. I went through a citizens' budget committee and, and found, through a very long painful process, I might add, about $16 million worth of reductions. And a large portion of that ended up being deferred maintenance, or pushing projects that were due down the road. A substantially large portion of that. I don't feel with the aging community that we have in Gilbert, and there are beautiful, brand-new shiny places in Gilbert, but we also have substantial needs in Gilbert right now, as far as our infrastructure goes. Without knowing what we might be deferring or pushing down the line, now there, again, there may be some low-hanging fruit, and, and that's wonderful. Can we still do it within the parameters that have been requested by our town staff? You bet. We can still go for those things, and still hold people accountable for those things, but not knowing what we might be deferring or pushing down the line, I don't think that that is a necessarily responsible first step for us. If, if we adopt what staff has recommended, and then we go back to them and say, all right, look, there, there's still more work that we feel like needs to be done, and we want you to look at the 410 issue, or whatever other things there are in our list, in the list that you might have, or others might have, I'm happy to go down that way, but I'm, I'm not comfortable with deferring things that, at this time, our community needs, when we do have the ability to properly repair and replace, when we do have the ability to tackle those things that maybe we've deferred for years in the community. And there, and then there are some things that we've deferred for, for too long, and we need to, we need to address those.
Councilmember Daniels, in the study session, one of the comments was made, is the preliminary budget is setting a cap, and a lot of details for the budget still are discussed, approved, not approved throughout the year. So, the cap is just the maximum spending limit, and so what I'm hearing from now, six years of doing this, is that every year we've been under, we'll probably find 6.7 million by just normal process. There still are topics to, that councilmembers want to talk about, the 410, but am I hearing, hearing you say that you would be willing to proceed with that number that has been given?
Correct.
Okay. Vice Mayor Cook?
Well, I just want to say, in the three years, that myself, Councilmember Ray, and Councilmember Peterson, you know, there, I just want to share some positive things that have happened, you know, since we've been on board, as relates to the zero-based budgeting, and prior-based budgeting, where when we got done through that process, nearly $2 million were basically, you know, found through that process, which was very nice. When we moved to the consolidated election, you know, we nearly saved a half a million dollars. The, you know, town staff in refunding, you know, the bonds, or paying them back, you know, I think we saved to the taxpayer, just on interest alone, over $20 million, you know, to the taxpayer. You know, we saw the charts where our FTE account was at 5.7 when we first started three years ago, we're now down to 5.36. You know, the bonds, the, you know, credit ratings, you know, they jumped up, where others in the, in the valley did not jump up. You know, we have the lowest cost of services, you know, I believe, in the valley, with the highest level of services. You know, we have, you know, the second safest, you know, city in the country. And all of this, all of this, that, you know, since we've been on board for three years, there has not been one tax increase to the public. And by the way, we even had a 7.5% reduction in solid waste to our utilities. I think, you know, what we've done, and what we've proven, has been substantial. And I just want to share that with the public, the things that we have done, the dollars that have gone back to the taxpayer for, you know, all the efficiencies, the best business practices that we've deployed, and, you know, and I know from looking from our budgets in the past, you know, this is just setting the limit. And we've seen, in the last three years, that even though the limit has been set, we've been substantially under through that process. So, I'm good in setting the limit for where it's at right now. I know in June, we're going to have further more discussion about some of these more details, but I'm good with this.
Councilmember Ray?
I will be brief and try not to repeat. This is simply a cap. I get that there are potentially some savings that we can agree upon between now and when the final budget is approved. I expect and I'm confident that Dawn and her office, along with the manager in his office, will work diligently at looking at each of those things. And so I'm in favor of moving forward, that we set the cap at this point, and we may find 6.7 million, we may find 8.8 million between now and then, that, that we can trim off before we approve the final budget. But I'm ready to make a motion and go forward with this as a, as a cap, knowing that there's still time between now and the final approval of the budget.
To Dawn and team, it does pass the reasonableness check. It does have a great focus on public safety, which I think our citizens appreciate, with the staffing, with equipment, with resources. It is a budget that helps us maintain services at a level that fits our mission, and I also think has helped prepare for the future, and so I'm willing to also give a support for a preliminary cap. And so I close the public hearing on agenda item 37, and we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item 36, 37, excuse me, and set a preliminary budget of $554,735,125.
Mayor, a second.
Mayor?
Please.
Sorry, debate's allowed after the second. I'm just going to add one last few comments. I want to respond to some things that were said, I think there's some misunderstanding on. As far as being under budget, that is not guaranteed now. The last fiscal year, '13 and '14, if you remember my chart from Tuesday, they matched exactly. So, the trend from the past, that we were always under budget, that's not necessarily happening anymore. We just have to keep that in mind. The, the other thing is deferred maintenance that was mentioned. My chart gets rid of all of the one-time costs. Those deferred maintenance, I'm allowing for with my chart, it doesn't even get factored into our spending in this chart. So I agree. As far as affording it, we can afford to do it. We can afford to do the maintenance, we can also afford to not raise taxes, $400,000. As far as the zero-based budgeting, we did that in fiscal year '13. That was a good year, we haven't done it since then. As far as our performance versus other cities and towns, we've always beat them. We're the ones setting the bar now. It's up to us to raise the bar on ourselves, and that's what I'm concerned with. I don't want to move backwards. And so, those are my last comments. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience.
Thanks for the comments. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you for indulging. There's an old principle in chemistry, in the gas laws, you know, where the gas expands to the size of the container, right, and expenses rise to income. If we set the top line where it is, we're going to spend the money. That's what we saw last year. And corporate boards always challenge their management to trim, set targets, cost contain, I mean, that's now part of our philosophy. I'm excited that we have some Six Sigma talent in here, and that's exciting, because that can be given goals and targets. And that was a commitment that I made to the constituents when I ran, is to bring some of the best practices from the private sector that we don't have today in. And so I, you know, if everybody's comfortable that we'll find the savings, I don't know why it scares anybody to lower that. But, anyway, so I just think we could bring in some of the great practices that we see from the great corporations, without a lot of fear or trepidation that things are going to break, and, you know, the roads are going to crumble, because certainly we want a wonderful city. I think we're all agreed on that, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for all the comments, and for a great team effort to create, to bring the budget together. So there was a motion and a second. Please vote. That's approved with a 4-2 vote. Thank you. We now leave the special meeting and return to our regular meeting.
Mayor, you need a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
I move to adjourn the special meeting.
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. Okay, thank you. We move to agenda item 38. The boards, commission and, commissions and committees, any comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, you touched on this with the, the students. If I could just echo that, with the summer reading program coming up, there was a great presentation by, my favorite part of the Parks and Recreation, from the library services, and they reported a lot of numbers. I wish I could share those, I'll circulate some of those notes, but not just the great reading program that we have, and lots of participants, both at the Southeast Regional, but also the Perry Branch, lots of great activities there, book clubs, genealogy clubs, they've got 3D printer demonstrations, the Phoenix Zoo's coming in. So just encourage everyone to take advantage of just the wonderful things that the town has over the summer, particularly in our library services program.
Thank you. Other updates on boards, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, we were recently invited as Forest City Gilbert to a regional Forest City meeting with Forest City Directors from different cities and towns, and Kevin Hartkey, councilmember with the City of Chandler, he helped host that. We had a great time discussing best practices and learning from each other. So we're very excited about some of the opportunities to move forward and improve our work, and the committee is very fired up right now. So we've got a lot of great things going on, and just wanted to report a little on that, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Under future meetings, just to confirm, that all councilmembers have seen, the executive session that potentially was going to be tonight was moved to Monday at 5:00 PM. And there's also feedback, or an email, I should say, from Vicki, having the six of us, and we'll include Councilmember Cooper, the seven of us, thinking of items, priorities and such, getting ready for retreat items, and that'll be a future discussion. Under agenda item 40, report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I want to remind our citizens that the public input for the high-speed passenger rail service being proposed between Phoenix and Tucson, on the three remaining routes, you can provide input and comments on that until May 31st of this month. You can find links to the ADOT website on the town's website, or you can go directly to the ADOT website and, and submit your comments on that. Also wanted to recognize, recognize some staff members, some, for some work that they do that is, is really quite special, and reminds us why jobs in the public sector are very special and very rewarding. I wanted to recognize the individuals on our team in our Parks and Recreation Department that were here tonight with the Adaptive Recreation Adult Unified Cheer Squad, and that's Krista Newberger Bauer, I'm sorry, Krista Newbauer, Recreation Coordinator, Renee Carlin. The coaches this year were Jennifer Myers and Whitney Siemens. And that's a wonderful program, they do a wonderful job with it, and we're very proud of that, and to be a part of that. Also wanted to recognize Fireman Mace Mattingly for the work he did with Logan Carson, he's a very special little boy. We're very lucky to have him as a resident of our community, and we are very grateful for our fire department and for Mace for the time he spent with that young man. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, I wanted to make a motion, wasn't on the agenda, to make Logan Carson the Citizen of the Year, or the Leader of the Year. He did a great job, and there, there's a video that's included that shows Mace with Logan, and, and you'll get a chance to look at it later. Thank you. And town manager, manager, agenda item five, we did have a council vote on the ADOT proposed lines, that as a council, we're encouraging citizens to consider the yellow line. Thank you. Agenda item 41, report from members of the council on current events. And agenda item 42, report from mayor on current events. In the student citizen of the month, there were four slides that talked about upcoming events, and this, and I'll just very quickly repeat. Saturday, AZ ICE, open house from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, invite families and citizens to enjoy that. Memorial Day, 9:00 AM, celebration at the Gilbert Historical Museum, free event, and the museum will be open after that. Band will be there, a great event for all of our veterans to be recognized. As was just mentioned by Councilmember Taylor, we encourage all of our, especially K through 12 citizens to get involved in the Maricopa County Reed Program, and that will be now our Gilbert Reeds Program for May 26 until the end of July. And then the food drive, citizens will start to see the June Food Drive, with all donations going to the United Food Bank, and we encourage citizens to be paying attention to that and locating spots to take food items. To all involved, thank you. Meeting adjourned.